Good evening, West Orange, and welcome to our council conference agenda. Madam Clerk, would you kindly owe your opening statement?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's office on September 26, 2018, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on October 4, 2018. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Present.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Garino?
Present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First up on our update will be update on redevelopment. Mr. Sayers?
Yes, here is, um, everything is going well down there. What I can see on the five minutes in today, um, they have 128 units that people have moved into, and they have 155 applications of people who are moving in there, um, and they're also ready to bring their site plan, uh, documents in from what I understand by the end of this week to start moving on to, uh, doing progressive project. So it's, everything is moving along, and I actually, after I spoke to him today, I went upstairs and I spoke to him, and he said, "Yes, if they fall, they're coming in again to rebuild the site." So it seems like it's everything moving along pretty much.
Okay, how about the retail units? Any update on those?
Uh, again, I haven't, I'll be honest with you, I did not discuss that with him, um, this week, but every time I do discuss it with him, he does have a few people, and, uh, he's not willing to come in there until they've kind of, you know, rent down at least half a building, you know, probably some over one-sixth of them have stayed. So, um, I know he, I don't know if he got an ABC license or if he's still looking for it, but I know he was looking for it. If he's still looking for it, still looking for an ABC license, but there is more to watch with than there is.
Okay. Any of my colleagues have any questions concerning redevelopment?
No.
No? No? Councilman Kukoviac?
Mr. Sayers, um, as you know, there was a very aggressive and very detailed timeline that was associated with Phase Two, and they were supposed to bring in their materials, their initial materials to the, uh, planning office last September.
Correct.
So that was nine months ago.
Correct.
What does that do to the timeline now?
Um, that's a good question. I'm not really sure. I have to speak to Mr. Trank about that. Um, I'll have to talk with him to find out. I'm not sure what the answer is.
Okay. I think at a minimum, we should get a new timeline that moves everything back nine months or whatever, uh, and get it to the council so that we can see it when you get a chance.
Sure. I'll, I'll talk to Mr. Trank about that and our, our redevelopment attorneys, and I'll see what they're, what their thoughts are.
But there's no, there's no negative consequences that's gonna devolve to the redeveloper because they were nine months late?
No, we didn't, we, we have not done anything.
It was, would that have been an, an event of default if, if the administration had decided to take it that route?
We could have if we wanted, but we didn't. We absolutely did not.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Any other question? No questions? Okay. Council liaison, um, Councilman Kukoviac?
None for me today.
None for you today? Okay. Councilwoman McCartney?
Okay. Hmm. I wanted to, um, congratulate the Police Department on their Junior, Juvenile Aid Bureau. We just got a letter that on their 19th Annual Junior Police Academy, there are up to 90 cadets enrolled in the program. So that's, uh, and it's always very productive. Um, I would invite everyone to visit westorangearts.org to look at all of the exhibits and upcoming workshops over the summer for the West Orange Arts Council. And really, nothing to report on the Planning Board because Planning Board met last Tuesday, special meeting on June 18, and in our package tonight is they, the Planning Board forwarded the recommendation for the West Orange Library Redevelopment Plan. And the other application that was approved is Sonrea Kitchen on Prospect Avenue, which will cater to, uh, people in town that are, have severe food allergies.
Oh, wow.
Mm-hmm. So, interesting.
Do you want to talk about the walk, the planting?
Okay. Joe, do you want me to talk about open space?
Oh, please, Joe.
So the open space and the Environmental Commission submitted a grant to Sustainable Jersey, and they were awarded $10,000, and it is helping, um, both commissions proceed with, um, the six acres on Mount Pleasant Avenue, at 577 Mount Pleasant Avenue. Six acres were preserved a few years back. One of the grants that was awarded, we were able to secure a landscape architect to design eight different gardens at that space called The Rock, um, and it literally is rock, a rock bed. Um, and this $10,000 grant that was just awarded, uh, was able to create the Pollinator Garden. So a lot of volunteers came out on Saturday and, um, to create the two gardens. So thank you, everyone, that was able to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Thank you, Council President. Just wanted to, um, thank everyone for coming out, those who do, did attend OSPAC Summer Fest. Uh, it was a real great success. I am a huge fan of Billy Idol, so, uh, although, Billy Joe, I'm sorry. All the, uh, all the time I was saying, "I'm going to leave," I was there, I think, till the end with Jerry. We wound up not, not leaving with Council President, I'm sorry. So I just want to give a special thanks to all of the volunteers that helped put this together, um, to Camille and the Pleasant Valley Production. It was a large undertaking to get that in order. The band that was there, so part of the sound equipment was ours, part, part was the band. So that was a great collaborative effort in order to get that underway. Please make sure that you visit the township website for the next event. We are hopeful that, um, we will have many more people join us. I know it was raining all day until about 1:00, so I'm sure people thought, uh, it was gonna be very soggy out, but quite to the contrary, and to my surprise, there's good drainage there. So there are people sitting on the grass with only minor, uh, wet spots. Uh, thanks to everyone who helped and, uh, look forward to a great summer event, uh, coming events with OSPAC. Thank you. That's it for me.
You don't have to be sorry. You can call me Jerry. They can call you Cindy.
That's our protocol.
That's okay. So, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yeah, it was a great event, beautiful evening, and, um, congratulations to Pleasant Valley Productions for a great opening night. Um, same time, Recreation Department had their annual sports and games, uh, for, celebrate the last day of school. They had well over 300 students attend, uh, so it was a nice, turned out to be a nice evening. A lot of kids come, came down to the pool to celebrate, uh, the summertime. Continuing with celebrations, July 4th, if you're in town, we're gonna have our annual Food Truck Festival, starting at 3:00 PM at West Orange High School. This year, the food trucks will be placed in between the, uh, soccer field and our baseball field across from Degnan Park, so please come down, start enjoying some great food, and stick around for annual fireworks celebration. And if you haven't had a chance yet to get to our beautiful Rock Spring Golf Course, please do so. We have some great rates for our West Orange residents. Um, on Thursdays is West Orange Resident Day, $28 for a green fee, $17 for a card fee. On, um, Tuesdays, any residents that are 60 years and older, $18 for a green fee and $17 for a card fee. Um, it, you could go right on the website to get a tee time, and I know the joint has been jumping, so, um, and go out and enjoy the day. Support our Rock Spring Country Club, our, our Township Golf Club. Mentioned the Police Academy, and I want to congratulate, um, our West Orange High School students. Last night, um, was graduation. We had 529 students graduate from, uh, at Cody Arena last evening, and thanks to all the volunteers and all the folks who donated for Project Graduation, so the, uh, our students can have a safe event up at, uh, in East Hanover at Sports and Games, or Funplex, as they call it now. So congratulations to all, and all the parents and the hard work. In regards to senior services, um, please note that on, um, starting July 1st, 8th, 15th, 22nd, 29th through August, um, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Rent a House, uh, there's a bingo program. So go out and play bingo, uh, at the Rent a House, starting July 1st, $5 for all nine sessions. So you can look on the township website for that as well. And we also have, down at our township pool, um, starting June 26th, which is this Wednesday, tomorrow, from 10:30 AM to 11:30 AM, is, uh, water aerobics, swim aerobics. So if you get adventurous, it's been a very hot out this week, if you want to start with our swim aerobics classes. I want to thank Laura Van Dyke and Noelia Perez, um, our new senior services coordinators. Um, they've, they've been doing a really great job stepping in, um, in some, uh, great shoes that left behind, and I just want to congratulate them. They really have been getting great feedback. They were down at our, uh, Laura was down at our street fair all day. She's been working diligently, uh, with Joe Fagan. She came to our public relations meeting, and so we're trying to get more publications out and more attendance. So everything's been going very smoothly, and I, I want to thank, uh, both ladies for all their hard work and effort, uh, transitioning to our community. And I'd also like to thank Mr. Fagan. He's been working on, uh, with the Public Relations Commission. We've been working on a resort guide booklet, uh, that we started last year as a project, um, that didn't, uh, take off too well because we keep changing and around with a lot of changes within the township. So we look to wrap that up, uh, before the end of this year. So those are all my announcements. Council President, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Um, just like to bring up that we have a fantastic farmer's market going on, on our Main Street. It's been really, really exciting. The pickles are fantastic, everything. They had a yoga workout at this last Saturday. Remember, just come on down. There's plenty of parking at 80 Main Street, you know, in, on Saturday. Um, it's fantastic. My, my compliments and my gratitude, especially from the downtown alliance and the residents, to Stacy Reese and her husband, Rob, for, uh, really pulling this together. It's really been exciting. The product mix, the farm mix, you know, uh, and like I said, I gotta mention the pickles are just fantastic, and the lemon ice. I'm sorry, my wife spends a lot of money with those every week, but anyway, so, uh, so really, you should come on down, really have a good time, meet some new neighbors. We see a lot of young families coming down to the farmer's market, so, um, please make every effort to come. Even if you come once, you'll find some fascinating products. Um, I just like to mention that, uh, there's a potential new restaurant, even though it's not in the downtown corridor, but it is being, uh, put together by one of our downtown retailers, Anthony Daxino from The Poorhouse, will be opening, hopefully, right across from Turtleback Zoo, Patsy's Clam House and Italian Restaurant, uh, sometime this coming, uh, late summer, early fall. So we're really grateful to Anthony and his continued support of our township, the downtown, and now to another part of our, our, our community. So, uh, it's really, we owe him a, a wealth of thanks, and it's people like him, retailers like Anthony, who really pull the township together. Also, coming on July 10th, will be our West Orange Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board meeting at 7:30 at the Essex County Educational Center at Turtleback Zoo, and my continual thanks to the County of Essex for our use of this great facility. We're able to make our presentations with our, all the video and the graphic equipment, so we thank the county and the county executive for that. So please come out, even though it's a summer meeting, we like to have as many people come out and express your opinions about what's going on with our pedestrian safety, with our complete streets, you know, with the new lights, the new traffic lights and signals that we're doing. Any comments you have, we'd like to hear them, and everybody that's come to our meeting has gotten great satisfaction, uh, on some of the great things we've been able to move forward with. So please come out on July 10th, 7:30 at the Essex County Educational Center at Turtleback Zoo. Next, I'd like to apologize that, uh, we had to cancel our bike rodeo, uh, the last two weeks due to rain, so, but we are rescheduling the bike rodeo, open to all children of West Orange in, in September, will probably be the first week in September, so watch out for announcements, and as soon as I get more updates, I'll let everyone know, uh, the applications that we redistributed, the parent waivers, and the, um, information, we'll have that all together again, because it's a great thing. The last one we had, uh, last year, we had over 95 kids, and it was great. They got all brand-new bike helmets, so it's a worthwhile event for the children to come out. Uh, again, also to, um, piggyback on what my colleague, Councilwoman Castellino, said, congratulations to the West Orange High School class of 2019. Uh, we are very proud of them, and we wish them continued success, and they should always know that they have support from their Township Council and their, and their community. And, um, let's see, anybody else? No, that's about it for me, so, thank you. Uh, anybody else? Councilman Kukoviac, have anything to say before, uh?
No, I, I passed once. Let me pass twice.
Okay, just, okay.
I feel like I'm playing poker.
All right, that's fine. You can, you understand that, right? Okay.
I call you.
We have to wait, okay. Anybody want to talk about anything else?
I, I'm actually, uh, looking for, uh, just to acknowledge a response I received from several of our, um...
Go ahead.
Sunday, early Sunday morning, before I got my day started, I sent an email to Chief Abbott of the West Orange Police Department, um, and I have to say, I was very surprised, A, that he responded almost immediately, and shamefully, I didn't see it till the end of Sunday evening. Um, I was asking him about, um, the modifications that have been made to the immigration directives with respect to the Attorney General's, um, directive for the trusting law enforcement. I know he spoke about it with us in an email when he initially, when all the departments initially got the request to update their mandates, and that was to be completed by February. I am very happy to hear that he has completed that with his department. All of our officers have been trained, and for the sake of transparency, if you are interested in reading what those new directives are for West Orange, um, Police Department and our community, what that means to us, it is listed on their website, so please feel free to make sure that you visit the website to become informed as to what the Attorney General's directives are and how West Orange is in compliance with those. Uh, we are gonna have continued conversations, so I just wanted to thank the Police Department, Chief Abbott, Deputy, uh, is it Brennan?
Mm-hmm.
I believe it's, yes. Um, and Lieutenant McDonald, as well as, uh, I believe it was William Villanelli?
William Varonelli.
Varonelli, uh, for their immediate response and, and their complete, um, assistance in helping me understand and navigate, uh, what they were doing in that process. So just a special thanks to the Police Department for their due diligence and proactive approach to, uh, the directives.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
You got 10 more.
No, I got, I got, I found something else that I could, I forgot to mention. Okay. Um, also, for public information, coming up, of course, on September 22nd, will be our 29th Annual Mayor's Walk Run for Ovarian Cancer, right here in front of Town Hall. Um, you can find the information, those, these will be posted around town, and plus, I'll give you the information that you can go to, for more information, you can call 973-736-0198, and you can also check on the ovarian cancer website, www.walkforovariancancer.com. And that will be on September 22nd, 2019, um, here at Town Hall, uh, starting at 9:00 AM. The lineup begins at 8:45, so we've always had a successful year. We've given out over, every year, no less than $150,000 for a great, great cause, and we hope more of our residents will participate. We hope you'll have your friends and family participate, particularly if somebody who has faced this dreaded disease, who has survived, or maybe has not, has survived, but to come and show your support, to do more research, and, and to show your community spirit and support for this worthy cause. Um, and that's, that's about it. And just keep looking on the township website, they'll be posted on, on the website. Yes, Councilwoman?
I was just gonna, yeah, I know we have some time, I was just...
I asked Joe already, if you want.
I, did you have anything that we missed, our public information officer?
I asked you.
I, I don't have anything to, uh, report in terms of public information. Ms. Brill brought that, uh, information up to us. Uh, just a reminder, the Mayor's 5K run is in September, and there will be ample opportunities to talk about that. Uh, I just wanted to mention briefly, on, uh, June 25th, 1927, the Rock Spring Clubhouse opened for the first time, so...
There you go.
Today's anniversary of the opening of the Rock Spring Clubhouse. Uh, other than that, I don't have anything to add.
Thank you, Mr. Fagan.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fagan. That was good.
I have a question for Mr. Sayers, unless, it being that we just mentioned Rock Spring. I've been getting asked by a few residents, do we know, right now, is the, the grill room is currently open when, um, golf is in play? Is there any food being served in the evening, or is it just during the day when golf is in play?
I'll be honest with you, I'm not sure, but I know it's open during the day when the course is open, and anyone can go in there off the street if they want to. I'm not sure if it's open after the golf. I don't think it is, but let me find out.
So someone wanted to come in and not play golf and just have lunch there, they can?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they can.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's open all day, whenever they're playing golf, but I think, once they're done, I think they shut it down. But I'll check on that, and I'll let you know tomorrow.
Okay. Very good. And, um, I'll just update my colleagues. I've been working with Mr. Lepore and having some conversations with some of the residents up at Rock Spring. I know they're looking, there's conversations about, uh, having speed bumps put in, and he's looking into, uh, portable ones, which could come out in the winter, which may work there. Um, also, um, I had mentioned to him, Mr. Sayers, if you want to jot it down and make sure, um, around the bend, when you come down Rock Spring, there's some areas where, um, hedging has to be clipped, so he was gonna look into that with Public Works for us, so... And we have seven minutes.
Thank you. And just an update, too, that the Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board meeting, in case I didn't say it, is July 10th.
7:30.
Just, just in case I didn't give a date, it's, it's, it's at 7:30. I'm sorry? Take a break? No?
Um, I have one more question.
Okay.
I can ask for another question?
I'm sorry?
Can I ask you another question? I'm not sure if you have the answer, not to put you on the spot.
Mr. Sayers, no, Mr. Sayers, I'll be sending you, uh, I have about 20 emails from residents along Rock Spring Road and all that. I just have some comments on issues and everything, things that we're gonna address in pedestrian safety, but also that things that maybe Public Works already sent in to Mr. Lepore, but things to look in for Rock Spring Road.
Sure.
Okay.
So my other question was, so I know we had out, um, we posted the position for the Senior Liveabilities Coordinator that was getting funded through the grant through Partners for Health.
Correct.
Where are we at in the process of hiring the position, the person for the position?
I spoke to Mr. Novo yesterday, and she got some other, some more applications in, and I think she's just waiting till the last day, and then we're gonna decide on who's gonna get there.
Okay, so you'll start interviews next week, maybe, or, or why not 4th of July?
Uh, yeah, I think by the end of this week, it, it should be completed.
Okay, great.
Then we'll start doing whatever we need to do next week.
All right, so we could target for the next meeting, uh, hiring the person, or?
Hopefully.
Very good. That'd be great.
We got about, she said, we have about five or six applications.
Yeah, and, and that'll be a nice added addition to our team that we have in place, so, great. Thank you, Mr. Sayers.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Sayers.
You're welcome.
Does the administration have anything to say?
Do you have anything to say?
No? Madam Clerk, do you have anything to say from the Clerk's office?
No.
No?
No.
No? Okay. Just, just want to give everybody their, their... Okay. I must say, just, just to go back to, to OSPAC, to congratulate everybody at OSPAC, it was a fantastic night, you know, we were really good. I think people who didn't come missed a great show. It, it was really, really wonderful, and the people that did come had a great time. We actually had people come down from the point, and they wanted to know, you know, what was going on, and they found out what was going on, and they all came down. So, um, you know, it's, it's gonna be worthwhile, and I'm looking forward to everything coming out of OSPAC. It's really great. So congratulations to all involved.
Downtown Thursdays?
I'm sorry?
Downtown Thursdays?
Downtown, oh, Downtown Thursdays? Ah, yes, now, I forgot about Downtown Thursdays. Mr. Fagan, could you help me out with Downtown Thursdays, because Ms. Brill had to go home, she wasn't feeling well, so can you give us an update on Downtown Thursdays? This is another great event along the downtown corridor, some great entertainment, and, Mr. Fagan can give us some updates.
Downtown Thursdays, as you know, there are four sections downtown. There's Eagle Rock, Tory Corner, St. Marks and the Valley, and each Thursday, uh, I don't have the dates, I was expecting Megan to be here, uh, but the dates are established, but each Thursday, there will be a different event, alternating between the four sections. Um, it will begin in Eagle Rock. Uh, I believe we're gonna have a band, uh, music, uh, business specials, uh, specific to the section where we're having Downtown Thursday, Downtown Thursdays, and it will continue through, um, through the end of August, uh, beginning, um, uh, the early part of July.
You have the dates, yeah. July 11.
Did you have the dates, Michelle?
July 11, July 18, and the 25th.
Thank you.
In July.
Thank you, Mr. Fagan.
Okay.
Actually, I was thinking, Mr. Paglisi, would you like to come up and, and give us some county updates? We appreciate it.
He appreciates it.
Nice, nice book, Anthony, very nice.
He appreciates it, he'll be home early.
He's gonna go home, or he can hang out with us.
Yeah, I like your air conditioning. Anthony Paglisi, representing County Executive Joe DiFincenzo. Uh, in front of you today, and I left additional copies outside, is our summer edition of Spirit of Essex. Uh, that lists a lot of the activities that are happening, uh, throughout the Essex County Park System, and through our Office of Cultural Affairs, they also list, uh, various, uh, events and activities that, um, museums, other cultural arts organizations operate. Um, so in the future, if you do have, uh, your schedule for OSPAC in advance, um, you can send that to us, and we can, uh, help you with publicity. Uh, there also is an online version of that. If you go to the Parks page, uh, there, there's an online calendar, so you can see all the events there as well. And that's at essexcountynj.org. Uh, also, I wish I had this information a little sooner. I actually just, um, saw it as I drove up to the Hall Rec, uh, to the Town Hall today. We're paving Mount Pleasant Avenue. Um, like I said, I wish I had known that and could have given you the heads-up a little sooner. Uh, that's part of our summer paving program. Um, and then, um, uh, finally, I know some, several council members I've had discussions with about Francis Burton Golf Course, and the first tea, um, that when golfers with horrible slices, uh, they're, they drive their ball, and it lands on the, uh, front lawns of the people alongside a Pleasant Valley Way. Um, so this is, this is kind of winding its way through the Freeholder Board. I think it'll be on their next, um, meeting schedule. Uh, we do have a plan where we're going to alter the, um, layout of, uh, hole number one, so the hole will be moved up a little closer, and instead of, um, hitting the ball parallel to Pleasant Valley Way, uh, the hole will be shifted into, um, the golf course, so you'll be hitting into the golf course, and it'll create a little bit of a buffer between that drive, uh, that fairway, sorry, I'm brushing up on my golf terminology, between that fairway and Pleasant Valley Way. So if, uh, if someone does slice, have a slice on their drive, it'll still land on the golf property. Um, if it goes through the approval process, fine, it'll, uh, probably, work will probably start, uh, at the end of July sometime, and, uh, be completed, uh, uh, before the end of the year. Uh, just wanted to keep you updated on that.
Anthony, any other paving projects going on in township of West Orange, town county roads, other than Mount Pleasant?
I can check that out. I don't know that off the top of my head, but I can, I'll, uh, send you the information tomorrow.
Thank you, sir. Yes, Councilwoman?
Thank you for that, about the, I'm happy to hear that about the residents on Pleasant Valley Way. Can you tell me when the next freeholder meeting is, that I can keep them informed?
I believe their next meeting is tomorrow.
Okay.
But I'll find out when it's on the agenda and-
Okay, do it that way, and then some? And on Mount Pleasant Avenue, I actually sent many a texts saying that I was, wished that we would have been able to expose some of, or keep some of the cobblestone exposed on Mount Pleasant, I just thought it lent itself nicely, it's all done now, but during the week, it was nice to see the cobblestone under the asphalt.
I think from a safety perspective, we would pave it over.
That's unfortunate.
Yeah. Thank you.
Done it more than once.
So long as you don't have your monogram initials on, and people won't know it's you.
I have done it more than once, trust me.
Thank you.
I'll show you the pictures of the bucket of golf balls they're collecting.
Okay.
Not happy.
Madam Clerk?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I know, now I gotta stop. Good evening, West Orange, thank you to our additional guests who have joined us since our conference agenda. Good evening, West Orange, and welcome to our council public meeting for June 25th, 2019. Madam Clerk, kindly read the public statement.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's office on September 26, 2018, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on October 4, 2018. Councilwoman Castelina?
Present.
Councilwoman Krokoviac?
Present.
Councilwoman Toot Brown?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Guarino?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it spans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this point in time, I'd like to open the council meeting to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak to the Town Council or make a statement, please raise your hand, and I'll call upon you, and you come up. Yes, Ms. Morelli? Mrs. Morelli?
I have two public announcements I'd like to make tonight. One affected me very seriously. I was hacked, and I was a victim of identity theft. So I'm here to tell, and hopefully tell the people out there, what to be aware of. It's, the way it happens, you feel viol-, I don't know how I feel, I can't even describe it, but I tried my cellphone in the morning, and I couldn't get through, I couldn't use it. Then I got onto my computer, and my email was all messed up. So I called Verizon, and we have AOL because Verizon moved it over to AOL, and I got some gentleman, and he said to me, "We don't take care of it, you have to talk to AOL," and he tried to connect me, and he didn't, and I lost him. So I went on, I think it's a Microsoft site, where you click that little thing, you can hit it's like Alexa, and I looked up AOL Customer Services, and I got a phone number. It was, that was the hacker. I should have, from the beginning, he had a real strong accent, and he said his name was Paul Simon, and that sort of kind of, but it didn't. A few things going, so he took over my system, because he was gonna check it out, I've had that done before by the geek, so I'm technically challenged, I didn't realize what it was. So he went on, and he went through the whole thing, and started telling me that I needed more protection, and of course, he had three levels to offer, of course, with them, we're prohibitive. And I said to him, "I never heard of," it was starting to work at that point, and I said, "I never heard of anybody paying, you know, for AOL." So then he made comments, because he did see, he saw everything, he saw my photo that I had there with my grandkids, and he wanted me to go to PayPal, I said, "No, no, no," so then I hung up. As a result, my cellphone, which is something even Verizon Wireless was shocked at, was switched, they call it from port to port, actually, it was from Verizon Wireless to another company. The technicians were stunned, they never heard that before. My email, obviously, was changed, and I had two people helping me, Marielle Clemmison, you all know, I didn't know what I was doing. Anyhow, she got, they gave me, got me on Gmail because AOL, and I'm sharing this, my experience, because this is what people are saying happens. AOL is the most hacked carrier than any other, so I got on Gmail. So now I had, the police, we have a, in case the people in town don't know it, we have an identity theft unit, they're excellent, they came in, took all, told report, made up a police report, and they work with the FBI. The day after that, I got a call from one of the financial institutions that said that somebody had written a check on my account. Fortunately, we blocked it. So that happened, even with the credit union that I belong to, so they had to block every single account that I have. I don't have any money, I don't have any checks, I don't have any credit cards, but bottom line turned out that all the things that we did, it wasn't me, it was the people who helped me, did, worked, like Fidelity blocked everything, they changed all the accounts, my checks, everything, all of that was done. There is a book, there are two books that the town has, and Karen, you might want to call Officer Brett Wagner.
Okay.
After I went through this whole thing, and then I got to the geeks, and they went through and they cleared the whole system, if any malware, I don't even know what I'm talking about with this technical language, but malware, viruses. So they cleaned it, if they found it, there's none left. I had to get a new number for my phone, and every day, I'm going online and watching them moving, you know, money between accounts, and I'm gonna keep them all closed. The other thing that maybe seniors don't know, you can freeze your social security number, you just go on one website and you freeze it, and that's a safe thing to do. You can unfreeze it anytime you want. And then I had to go on and report to the state identity theft, it's in the FTC, is the federal, you know, Federal Trade Commission, but that's where they handle the, these kind of complaints. So there's a lot involved, but these two booklets, one of them takes you from the very beginning, when you discover it's happening, and all the steps you need to go through. So all I can say is, don't click on anything that you're not familiar with, but who would have expected? And the police said that they couldn't even get back to the information that I got that was allegedly AOL. It's scary, it's a really scary thing. Anyhow, I'm fortunate, with whatever we did, blocked everything, but I can't describe the emotional feeling of being violated like that, fear, whatever. It's bad, it's really bad. So just be careful, seniors out there, be very, very careful, and there's a million other scams, but this one, I thought was the epitome of one I've ever heard.
Thank you.
Joe, I have a suggestion for two veterans I think need awards, need recognition. One is a Vietnam veteran, ran a soup kitchen for many years, volunteered when he retired. The other one you might know, was in the Navy, Second World War, just got a papal recognition, you know who I'm talking about, right?
Yeah.
I think we need to recognize them.
I haven't acknowledged it at all.
Okay. We need to do plaques, we need a big ceremony, because they're seniors and they deserve it.
What makes you think I'm in charge of them?
I thought you were. Okay, who's in charge? You?
Me?
Yeah.
I couldn't be you.
Okay. We'll talk.
You got me.
Talk to you tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosemary. Thank you.
I'd just like to address that, and please forgive my, if I seem rude, but I am in constant contact with our veterans, World War II veterans. I interview at least one a week. They come into my office on a regular basis, but in terms of advising me to give them plaques, they certainly are deserving of plaques, but it's just not the purview of my office as public information officer, to arrange for plaques to World War II veterans. Now, if that's something that I would gladly do, if I was so instructed.
Thank you, Mr. Fagan.
Publicly, I apologize to you, Joe, I thought you were. Forgive me, it will never happen again, okay? Can you tell me who does it? Sayers?
I'll tell them.
You do it?
You'll handle it.
Somebody has to do it in the town. I mean, we get, people get honored all the time.
I'll talk to you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
I have to say, I apologize, I think it's a federal.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the Township Council? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, Claire Silvestri, 20 Grandview Avenue. There's been a lot of discussion on social media the last few days regarding the 2019 budget and the third quarter estimated tax bills. A couple of questions came up that I thought would be best answered here by the administration. First is a question that has to do with how the surplus is built into the budget. I attended about two and a half hours of the budget hearing earlier this week, I mean, this month, I'm sorry, and shortly after I sat down during the hearing, a council member suggested cutting a line in the Recreation Department's budget for janitorial services. I believe in 2018, only $153 of a $2,500 budget had been spent on the janitorial services, yet the $2,500 was budgeted again for 2019. When the cut was suggested, Mr. Gross stated that the amount couldn't be cut because that $2,500, as well as all the other line items in the budget where funds had been budgeted but not used in 2018, were needed in order to build the budget surplus. He said it's a state law that the surplus has to be built in this way. Now, I know private and public sector budgeting standards are different, but to the layman, this kind of budgeting is rather counterintuitive, and it certainly wouldn't fly when I was doing budgeting in my corporate experience. So I would ask if Mr. Gross could either point us to where in the state law, or actually, you know, read it to us, so that we can understand why this is the type of budgeting that's it built in. The other question has to do with the next scheduled townwide reevaluation, people were asking about when the next reeval was coming, and it's my understanding that reevals are usually conducted every ten years, and that in fact, the Essex County Tax Board has recently notified West Orange that we are in need of another townwide reevaluation to be completed by October 2021. However, I've also been told that the township has challenged this directive in court, so again, could someone from the administration please give us an update about why the township is challenging the tax board on the reeval, and where all of this stands? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Good evening.
My name is Susan McAbby, I'm at Two Mountain Way. I also wanted to talk a little bit about the budget. I bought my house in 2001, so I've been here eighteen years-ish. My taxes when I first bought the house were around $6,000. In the first eight years that I lived here, they doubled. Very upsetting, you know, it's a lot of extra money, but in the past ten years, even with this tax increases that were expected this year, they will have gone up only a third again. So while I understand that budget increases are not good, and we don't want that, I'm thinking three percent a year, if we're talking, you know, cost of living increases for our staff, and all the extra services I've seen come on board, I'm not that upset about it. If we need to cut services to get it lower, I'm okay with that, you know, some of them would be harder for me to take than others, but this town offers more services than I've had in any other town I have ever lived. And I enjoy the services that we get, I'm willing to pay for that, but what I don't want is for the people either making the choices about what we cut and what we don't cut, or more importantly, the people who work for our town, to feel like the residents are against them and calling them criminals and creeps and whatever, because they just want their paycheck, and they want a raise like all of us do. I want to make sure that what we're doing is making a fair and welcoming town for our citizens and for the people who work here, because they do important work that I personally get a lot of enjoyment and a lot of benefit from. So it's, you know, it's unfortunate that we're looking at a large increase this year, but I just don't see it as being like the end of the world, I don't think that anybody should be insulted because of it, you know, so I just wanted to say, I hope everybody chills out, and that we just have people work to get the best services we can for the money we're able to spend.
Thank you, Ms. McAbby. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Township Council, make a statement? Seeing none, I close public comment, I open public comment to my council colleagues. Councilwoman Krokoviac?
Thank you, Council President. Ms. Morelli, I'm very sorry to hear your experience, hopefully by speaking about it at a town council meeting, you can warn other people to be on alert, and what steps to I'll defer answers to Ms. Silvestri's questions to the administration, to Mr. Gross, but I will point out that surplus is a very important part of the budget process, and the budget itself, because it's there not only for contingencies, things that happen that we don't budget for, but it's also an important element that both the state, the state and credit rating agencies look at as a margin of safety. And Ms. McAbby, thanks very much for coming in and sharing your thoughts. So, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilwoman McCartney?
Thank you. So, Mrs. Morelli, thank you for sharing your experience, and you're saying about AOL and the numbers are there, the same thing is happening with PSENG, everyone, please be aware, that it, PSENG, the number actually comes up on your caller ID, it looks very legitimate, and yet they have somehow hacked your data, telephone numbers, so you think you're actually speaking to someone, and they're trying to tell you that you have an outstanding invoice, so please be careful with that as well. Thank you. John can talk about the surplus, though there were so many things that we looked at during our budget hearing, our marathon budget hearing, and every time we thought we found something, it was surplus, and then that would impact our taxes, so John, maybe you can give us an overview of that as well, but we did scrutinize that budget. And Ms. McAbby, I appreciate your comments, because we are now getting inundated with emails, people telling us that we need to lay people off, cut services, and we did have a marathon, Lawrence sat through, Lawrence sat through our twelve-hour marathon budget hearing, and we did scrutinize and look for ways, we're not done yet, we're still investigating, but that was a breath of fresh air for you to come tonight to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. Councilwoman Toot Brown?
Just a big thank you, Ms. Morelli, I know that that violation is really devastating, particularly when you don't have access to the outside world, because we live with our phones and our emails. I can't imagine, I cannot imagine, so I'm sorry that you had that experience, but I'm happy that, you know, we live in a community where you're able to reach out to your neighbors, and they're always willing to be there to assist our police department. I didn't know we had an identity theft unit, so I'm very happy that you shared that information as well, it's a good public service announcement. I'm sorry that happened to you, but thank you for sharing. And my husband won't like that I say this, but I've been telling him to get off AOL forever. I'm gonna show him this video when it comes out on Tuesday, just to prove my point. Ms. Silvestri, yeah, I will also let Mr. Gross respond with respect to the surplus that is necessary in our budget, a rainy day fund, if you will. The state right now is currently going through, you know, the same process, and there's a lot of talk about this rainy day fund and, you know, fortunately or not, it's something that municipalities and states' governments need to be able to function on a day-to-day basis for those same contingencies or emergencies that may come up. So, I'll let Mr. Gross discuss that a little bit further. I know that I, when we received the notice from the county to do another reeval, I was happy to hear our mayor vehemently against that for his residents. So, you know, I'm also happy that he has challenged it and taken that process, and he can speak to them. I believe that if you were here on, I think it was the second public budget presentation, he did speak to that because someone asked about that as well. I don't want to say verbatim what he said because I don't remember it verbatim, but I do know that that was the reason that he wanted to challenge it. He didn't think it was fair to the residents to do right away, and also because it was costly to do. I think it was over a million dollars to do a townwide reeval, and he just didn't think that we should be in that place. Ms. Maccabee, thank you for your kind words. It has been rough. I received the same emails my colleagues receive as well, and I have to say, being on this side of the dais, it's a whole different world. We spent 13 hours, and it was a marathon, all of us in this room, sometimes getting a little passionate. I did apologize for that at the end of the day. For me, it's a learning process, but I have to say, and I made a comment on my public council Facebook page, social media, I won't comment on other social media pages, but I will comment on my own, and I thanked my council colleagues and the administration for all of the work that was put in because we did go line by line by line painstakingly to see where we can cut. And when we're talking about cutting services, it's difficult, you know, after talking to the police and fire department, you know, that they are shorthanded as well. It's hard to say, "Cut that service," but we do have, we do have to take a long, hard look and see what services we're unfortunately going to be able to cut and see where we go. We're not finished. We are going to schedule another working meeting, my council colleagues and I, to try and absorb everything we've heard and go back to the table and give it one more shot. And I'm sure that that's going to be pretty challenging, but it's something that we certainly need to undertake on behalf of our residents. So, I think that's, yes, that is, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Castellino?
Okay. So, in regards to the budget, Mr. Maccabee, I thank you again for sitting with us on that long day, so, and Ms. Maccabee for coming down today. It's very hard when you are dealing with the staff. We try to be mindful. In our roles up here, there's many balls we have to juggle, and of course, one is a tax burden on our residents, but we also have to be mindful of our facilities, our services, and our staff, the well-being of our staff. And there are, there is, as we all feel, cost of living increase year after year, and with healthcare costs rising at a rapid pace, you know, we have some folks, I know I've experienced in the private sector, but even in the public sector, for our employees who if are not receiving cost of living raises, they're also getting increased costs and deductions in their paychecks from healthcare's costs rising. And we've had some that haven't raises in quite some time, so it's very difficult when they're not contractual and they're on the guide. We also have had some experiences with staff where staff has retired and we haven't replaced positions, and they're picking up extra duties and not being compensated for. So, when you see increases for staff in the budget, there's many reasons. That's why we take the time to sit here with the directors. On June 8th, we sat here and each director came one by one in this seat here along with our administration, and, you know, we asked the difficult questions, what you could do without and how you're managing with the limited staff, and our services, you know, are we being productive with our services? I think we all agree with police and fire. That was very important to us, and, you know, the staff came here not to make cuts with us, but they had already made reductions, major reductions in their budget needs. So, it was, I thank the administration, and we're going to go at it again with just us to make sure we reduce $130,000 that day, which it doesn't seem like much, but with the budget crisis that we're facing, you know, we try to do what we can, but we have to have that one last conversation amongst the council is if we want to go into real reduction with services, which will result in layoffs. Right now, we're not laying off anyone. So, another last difficult conversation we all need to have, and hopefully we'll get something discussed at Pending Matters. In regards to Mr. Gross, when you get to Mrs. Kroviek's comments in regards to, and thank you for bringing some of those conversations to us, because it's always important to see how we sit through these budget presentations and we're in it. I know the mayor made a couple presentations, but sometimes information isn't always received and understood on the other end. So, if you can explain the surplus, how we built it in, also regards to third quarter tax, from what I'm hearing from folks in conversations I've had the past week since the tax, the estimated tax bill hit, I think some people are multiplying that times four quarters and thinking that's the increase, so if you could address that, how that is not the increase, and go over how that estimation works and how that would reflect their final tax bill once it's presented to them. I think that would be helpful information. Also, there's a lot of talk, you know, about our garbage contract and comparison and only one bid. I know we beat that to death last year, but I think folks have this mindset. It's because of the kind of gas we want the trucks to drive, or, you know, there's some comments out there, so if you could address that for us today in that process. We had a lengthy process in regards to our garbage contract. We even took the time, health department worked on it for six months, and we took the time to bid that out with our Board of Education to try a shared service. So, unfortunately, that bid, I personally feel that there's limited contractors out there, and with our topography with the hills, I saw that when I was on the school board with limited transportation companies knocking on our door for bids. We have the hills, if, you know, if, you know, I, you know, going up and down these hills, we don't do well with our brakes here in the township. I know I go for, pay for a lot of brake repairs in my household with my kids, so I could just imagine, and I know we have repairs on the, on the public vehicles. So, with that said, Mr. Gross, hopefully you could explain a few of the details and some of the comments we've been hearing. But Ms. Morelli, again, I want to thank you for, you know, I know everybody's been, thank you this evening for coming forth with your comments and share them with us, and I know you sat through one of Brett's, the officer's presentations in regards to cybersecurity. I know Ms. Van Dyke, I had to ask her, they're working on another presentation each summer at the pool. We touch base on that with different seminars, so we look forward to another presentation, whether they are during the course of the year at other community centers, but it's important. And folks, please note too, I know I've seen some emails, and our township clerk could attest to us in regards to solicitors knocking on the doors, so we've been having issues with that. So, please, do not answer a door if you don't feel comfortable. Also, be mindful, someone shouldn't be knocking on your door without a permit, and very few permits are given each year, and we've had a situation where there's been a company knocking on some resident's door and they do not have a permit. So, do not feel like you should open the door. You could always call down to the police station, call Madam Clerk, and she'll let you know if a permit has been issued. You could also get a no solicitation sign put in your home, so no one approaches you for that reason. So, please be mindful. Myself, I had an experience last year with the IRS, and I, it was a letter in the mail, and somehow it didn't look fully legitimate, and I Googled the phone number of where they, you know, that was on there, and sure enough, it came up in Google search that it was a scam. So, sometimes do that if you're not, if you're leery, to just Google the phone number that may be on the paperwork, and usually pops right up from other conversations that is a scam. So, I hope folks will be careful out there, and everybody be safe. Council President, that's all my comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Ms. Morelli, it's a good point you brought up, and hopefully Mr. Fagan, our PIO officer, could help because it is a big problem with system hackings, you know, webmail, the whole thing, and you have to realize that through your PC, your phone can be hacked through. It's one direct connection. So, Mr. Fagan, if it's possible, we could get out to our public, particularly our senior population, there are, you know, tutorials and very basic, you know, informational, you know, data that they could use, what they need to watch out for, like particularly if somebody calls them up, or an email comes up and is rushing for an information and for an answer, that is a prime malware thing from a hacker. You know, we have these all the time. So, if we can get something out there to our population, particularly our seniors, who, you know, we don't want their PCs or anything to be hacked. We don't let them, have them lose, you know, contact with the outside world. So, it's something I think if we can look into, Joe, it would be very, very helpful. Give me, let me finish. Mr. and Mrs. Maccabee, I tremendously respect both of you, and your constant letters and just the content of your letters and your attitude towards the municipal financial situation is admirable, and I wish I could share your letters, and if you'll let me, with the general public, to let people realize that there are residents who do fully understand. There is a real professional, courteous, and kind way of being critical and being understanding of what's going on within the financial scope of the township. And we're not the only township that are facing these financial issues. I like, I like when I get, you know, those emails or on Facebook, people say, "Well, the other towns in the area have zero increases this year." Well, I met with Mr. The Mayor of Maplewood, they're going up 6.5%. I mean, the mayor of Milburn. So, I don't want to hear that nobody else is having tax increases because there are. Did the council work diligently? Yes, I believe my council colleagues, like Councilwoman Mathieu Brown said, we spent 13 hours here, and Mr. Maccabee also, thank you, for spending the time here, and we went through the budget. We also had the Citizens Budget Advisory Board. They met and they went through it, and I believe nothing was found significantly to take out of the budget. That's what I was told, but I can't say that for a fact because I haven't seen the Budget Advisory Committee make a presentation, which I wish they would to let us know what was done. So, particularly, if there's nothing to take out of the budget, I don't know where else. And when you talk about garbage, garbage was an issue, yes, and as Councilwoman Castellino said, there was a concerted effort between the township and the Board of Education to get a shared services, but nobody wanted it. And with recycling throughout the world where Asia is no longer buying our recyclables, that's another part of the revenue stream that disappeared. There can be excuses, and I'm not making excuses, I'm just saying, these are the things you have to look at when you look at how the town went about doing things. You want to start charging residents for something? I don't believe we should certain things, because if you're going to save $5 and you're going to charge residents $300 to use a service, I think they get stiffed on a budget adjustment versus $3 versus an additional $300 for their part. So, that's where we have to look at this and see, yes, you want to cut, you want to charge people, but then look at the other side, okay? Nobody should come and say, "Well, I don't use a service. I shouldn't pay for it." Well, there are services a lot of us don't use. Why should we pay for them? We're a community, and that's our responsibility. We're here to support one another. I hear people tell me their kids don't go to the school system. Why are they paying for the school system? You're part of the community, and that's our obligation. My kids are no longer in the school system, but I pay because it's my obligation. It's my turn to pay for somebody else's children. So, I mean, other than that, I mean, if people have ideas, you know, come to the council, send us emails, be courteous, be professional, as you make your recommendations. Don't go off half-cocked saying, "We're doing this, we're doing that, we're doing this, we're doing that." Ask us questions. Come to the council and ask us, because most people that come to the council and ask questions are when they approach us at an event, at OSPOC when they were talking, at the Boy Scout Eagle, you know, event this past Sunday. We have a lot of Eagle Scouts in West Orange, and I'm going to be proud of, but when you talk to the residents and you sit down and you talk to them when they have their questions, after they've had the conversation, they fully understand, and they feel a lot better. And I can go on and on, but I'm not going to because my council colleagues have made their point. Mr. Gross, I expect you to make your comments about, you know, the revaluation and about the surplus. So, on that point, I'm done, and I'll turn it over to the administration. Mr. Gross, could you fill us in on what was requested?
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. I appreciate the opportunity to talk about these topics. As you might imagine, we've been fielding dozens and dozens of calls from township taxpayers, and while we never, ever would look at one of our taxpayers and say, "Chill out," it's, there's something refreshing having a taxpayer tell us to chill out tonight, so thank you for that. That was, I think that's helpful to take some of the tension out of the air. I'll go in reverse. I think the question of the reval that was brought up, you know, reval your property is a fairness issue, and the township is not inherently against that, and in fact, we're for having fairness and making sure that all properties are properly assessed and equally assessed. I think the mayor's concern and the reason for the appeal is that our ratio of assessed value to true value frankly isn't very far off, and given that there's a $1.5 to $2 million expense with going through a reval, I think that the mayor felt that it was prudent, and the administration believes that it's prudent to delay what the date through appeal that we were being ordered to have the reassessment done. So, I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a difference of opinion or view or concern over fairness. It's just a matter of balancing fairness and the expense moving forward. So, I certainly expect this, this will get resolved in short shift, I would expect. The issue of the surplus, Mrs. Kroviek is completely right. Public sector and private sector are completely different economics. We always strive in the public sector to have business processes and methodologies, you know, for efficiency used, but the reality is our finances are completely upside down of that, and that's why you, this is not a common feature that the private sector would be used to. In municipal government, we have only one place to go for revenue, or our primary source of revenue is to go for taxes. So, unlike the private sector, we will use our surplus as income so that we can reduce the amount that we raise in taxes from our taxpayers. So, during the budget process, anything we do that reduces our surplus increases the need for taxes in the following year. So, the discussions that we were having about that on the budget hearing date, and the laws that go into that is about the construction of budgets, and we were focusing on working on these budgets over a two-year period, and making, taking actions in this year's budget that also would impact the following year to minimize harsh realities that we may have, may have to face of, you know, very, very difficult cuts. So, it's, that's basically the issue of surplus, is that when you reduce it in this year, we don't have it the following year for revenue, and that increases taxes the year following. So, it's a matter, we can go into a lot more detail, but I don't know that we need to do that tonight. Hopefully, that answers that question.
The three, the third quarter estimate?
Yes, we did, the third quarter estimated tax bill came out. One of the issues that was brought up to me today was there was some confusion over that. that. And it's just, it's the same as every year, but I think oftentimes people don't realize that when you get your third year, third quarter estimated bill, you are paying anticipated taxes from the first and second quarter. So if you want to know your tax bill for the year, you don't take your third quarter and multiply it by four and that's the amount of taxes, yet that would be way higher than what your actual amount of, to be raised by taxation would be for the year 2019. If you want to know how much taxes that you'll be billed for the year 2019, basically you would take your first half of the bills and add them to the second half of the bills and that would be the amount. You certainly wouldn't take them and anticipate that the third quarter was typical for all four quarters.
Councilwoman Krokoviac?
Yes, thank you. Just, just to follow up on a couple of these, your explanations, Mr. Gross. On the, on the revow, the township started the legal challenge in early May. What's sort of the timeline that we could expect to know something from the court case? And are those challenges to the reevaluation orders, are they generally successful or generally unsuccessful?
They're unusual. They're unusual.
Unusual just to do them?
In general, I mean, you don't, you don't see a lot of that. I mean, you know, and it's difficult to predict. I suspect if it gets, uh, you know, just like anything else, you have two parties and those two parties can agree to disagree or agree to agree later on in the process. So I suspect this will probably resolve earlier than, than the longest possibility. If we get into pure litigation, it could drag out for a while. I suspect we'll come to some conclusion earlier than that.
Okay. On your, your second discussion of the, of the surplus, the surplus this year, the proposed surplus has been cut significantly. I don't know, it's, is it 40%, 60%, something around there? Could you tell me how that, how the dynamics of that work in light of what you were saying? You want to keep the surplus because when you reduce it, you got to raise the taxes to rebuild it. But what's, what would be the process here if our surplus went way down this year? What does that do? Does it free up money to spend on stuff this year and then do we have to raise the taxes next year?
When, I think what we need to talk about is the generation of surplus in order to, you know, every year, the budget, we anticipate and historically have raised about $3 million a year in generating surplus during. We're, we're looking probably going to be raising about $2 million in surplus moving forward. And that's for a lot of reasons, which we talked a little bit, a lot about over time and we certainly can talk about more, but we're down to two. If you were to start cutting more out of the budget moving forward, that, that $2 million would go down to a million. And then that, that would be a million dollars you would not have to anticipate as revenue in the years following and you'd have to raise an additional $1 million. So in, next year, you know, if, if, if that were this year, this, our percentage point at $1 million is close to 2%, 2% more. So it's, it's not an insignificant number.
Right. And that's why I was asking you what the dynamics are. If they, if we reduce our surplus or our expected surplus this year by $1 million, it goes from roughly $3 million to $2 million. Does that give us an extra $1 million to pay expenses this year? Or do we just not raise it?
Well, if you cut, if you cut $1 million, you would, if you cut $1 million out of, of this year's budget.
Hard spending, what we were actually going to say?
Well, no, no, of surplus. If you took $1 million out of surplus, you would, you would raise a million, you would get a tax advantage of $1 million you would, you would, you would not have to raise this year. But then next year, you'd have $1 million less that you would have, so you'd have to raise an additional $1 million. So that washes. But then you have the issue of what your spending levels need to be in order to avoid cuts and you would be lowering that spending level so you would have to, not only would you have to raise it a million, but you'd probably have to raise it $2 million because these things tend, tend to double up. So.
So can people?
Can multiply.
So if we, if we cut our surplus by $1 million this year, roughly speaking, like you said, does that mean we're, we're probably going to have to have at least a 2% tax increase next year to get that back?
Just to offset that.
Just to get that back?
Just that, yeah.
And is, are there other ways, I think Ms. Silvestri asked, are there other ways to create the surplus other than the technique?
You'd have to do 2% just to get that million back, but to get you back, get you back to where you would have been, you'd have to raise it 4% because you've lost, you've lost the compounding effect.
But the compounding effect is 100% a year?
Yeah. It's not, it's not an interest effect, but it's, it's because it, I could, if I had a scale, I would show you, but basically your, your, your level of your taxes don't go up, they only go up so far.
So they go up by a lower base, yes.
They go up by a lower base. So your base is at lower. So not only did you lose the $1 million in surplus that you, that you would be regenerating every year, which you will never again, but now you've got to raise the taxes again to get back to the base.
And that's part of why the mayor is recommending 8.5% this year to raise the total level of taxation so that we, we can basically, the base of the actual dollar amount of taxation, so 2% off of, a 2% increase off of an 8.5% increase this year gives you a lot more dollars than if it's, it's the other way around.
In order to maintain the, the, the level of services that we provide today, it requires us to get up to that tax level. And if you waited to next year to do it, instead of being 8.5, it'd be 12.5.
Right.
Because you'd lose the compounding effect.
Okay.
The other, excuse me.
Please, go ahead.
The other important issue is, is that it affects our, our financial ratings also.
Oh, yeah.
Which means that when you have a lower ratio, your financial, our financial ratings go down. So if, in other words, when we go out to bond, we'd be paying more for the bonds than we're paying now. Right now, we're at the top and we try to stay at the top because we get the cheapest interest rates.
So one of Ms. Silvestri's other questions was, I think, were there, are there other techniques to use to build the surplus other than the way we do it, which is all of these line items that we don't expect to actually spend? And then it's?
Oh, certainly. I mean, there's, there's multiple factors that go into, into surplus building and, and some you have control of and some you don't. This is one you have control over. The others are based on your income level, you know, what your revenues are above and beyond what you expected them to be. There's cancellation of, you know, there's appropriations if you choose not to and you know, every year will, we come to you with some cancellations of appropriations and that goes in the surplus. So we, we're very protective of the surplus, you know, because it's such an important part of maintaining a stable tax rate. It's, it's something that, that needs to be, and it's a big asset that we have.
Right. So, so all of these different techniques are prescribed by the state, the state finance department of how you account and how you do all of your finance in the budget, correct?
It's part and parcel to the, the entire statutory requirements of how we structure and, and construct our budgets. There's not, there's not a, a specific law that says, um, you know, in order to build surplus, you have to do it this way. It doesn't, you won't find that. But it's all part of what we are, we learn and are taught, you know, when we become certified and as a municipal finance officers, that there's, these are, these are the statutes that apply and how you apply them.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Mr. Sayers, Mr. Gross. Okay. Moving on, Mr. Fagan, I just wanted to say something about my question with the, you know, computer hacking and, yes, I just wanted to certainly agree with you, cyber crime is a, is, is on the rise. And I'd have to say that at least 50 to 60 reports I get from the police department regarding the police blotter have to do with identity theft. And just to be clear, I think what Ms. Morelli is talking about is that she had a problem, or I can just speak from my personal experience, you have a problem, say with AOL and you want to call customer service. You Google or you look up on the internet a customer service number and the number comes up at what seems real and fake and you call them and as Councilwoman indicated, happens with PSE and G, and you think you're talking to a representative from the company and you're not. You're talking to a, a quote unquote hacker. They're not accessing your system, but you're giving them information based on that you think they're a company representative. And oftentimes they're located overseas, they're not in the United States. And as I said, this has happened to me as well. And the question I usually ask them, I ask them where they're located and they're not in the United States, so they make up a location. As recent as last week, someone said, I'm in Miami. And I said, oh, what's the name of the football team in Miami? And they couldn't tell me. And it's just a way, way to catch them. So yes, it is a very serious issue and, you know, it's hard to stay ahead of them because they're always two steps ahead of us. So. And I appreciate that. My question to you though, is there anything we can get out to our residents? I get out any information I can, but I'm not a cybersecurity expert, but any information that comes across my office is certainly I push out and mostly it's in the police blotter as things that have happened and, you know, citizens should make themselves aware of all the possibilities and even at that, they wouldn't know all the possibilities. It's just if it doesn't seem right, it's not right. Thank you, Joe. Much appreciate it. Madam Clerk, can sitting along with the consent agenda?
Approval of previous meeting, public meeting, June 12th, 2019.
Consent.
Consent. Report of Township Officers Nun, reading of petitions and communications and bids, West Orange Planning Board Resolution 19-04, Planning Board recommendation, West Orange Library redevelopment plan, block 68, lot 1, 46 Mount Pleasant Avenue.
I do have one comment to make. Thank you. On the memorandum that we did receive from the planning board, the resolution is attached, but in number three, I know it says that it describes, Planning Board did approve this, took forward to the council for recommendation, but in number three of the resolution, it talks about the site, the library site being adjacent to the John P. Renta House. And it says in this resolution that it houses 72 senior apartments. There are really 183 senior apartments at the Renta House, though that seems significant, it's not really materially significant, it's just saying that the apartment, that number should be changed. I did speak to the Planning Board attorney about that and we can get a corrected copy, but, just to make note, that's how many appointments, that's how many apartments are over there. Other than that, it was recommended.
Okay. Any other comments? Saying none, do we have a consent?
Consent.
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 Bills, are there any resolu, I'm sorry, is there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Consent.
Resolution, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
Councilwoman Castellino?
Uh, just, I just want to make notation, but I don't have anything to be pulled.
Which one?
You want me, I don't have anything to be pulled.
You have a question?
Yeah, I have a question, you want me to have a?
Okay, ask your questions.
Or notation, rather.
Sure.
So on Resolution 162, kudos to our police department for receiving a $100,000 grant awarded by the Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs. They are, it's a memorandum of understanding with the Clara Mass Medical Center, subsidiary of RWJ Barnabas, to create implant, a justice and mental health collaboration program. So this grant money will be utilized for training for our officers so they can deal with the public. Mr. Gross, if you want to elaborate on the exact details, we have two other resolutions for the consultants that will be dealing with, that's Resolutions 171 and 172. And if you want to just elaborate on some of the things we talked about this afternoon.
Yeah, I mean, this is a, this is a grant that we've got that allows to hire professionals and some money for training, to develop training and the objective is to put together resources that we currently don't have or have not had about how to de-escalate tense situations when, when the police department, when the police officers are in the field and dealing with situations that could, that are very volatile. It's, it's very timely and it's, it's, we're very happy to have gotten this grant and our, we've had very good success in general. I think it's one of the reasons that we were, received the grant is that we want to look to see where to take this in the future. Our department's very sensitive to these issues and we think that moving forward, perhaps we can set standards that can be used statewide or nationwide for that matter.
And I think with, it's very beneficial, we have a lot of younger officers on, on staff now on duty and so in regards to their protection and the protection of our residents, I commend the chief and all that were involved in the grant writing. And again, thank you to Millennium, they've been outstanding with grant writing and producing a need, that much needed additional revenue to the community, you know, talking about the budget. We're, we've been averaging the past two years about $1.7 million in grants, receipts. So hopefully we're going to be continuing that in the coming years and hopefully to add to that. So, thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Councilwoman McTupan?
Yes, I actually want to pull Resolutions 16319 and 16419. And this is having to do with the combination of certain issues of general improvement bonds, totaling $7,621,000 as a principal amount. That's 16319. And 16419 is resolution determining the form and other details of the $7,621 for general improvement bond. So I'd like to pull those so we can discuss those and then I had questions on other.
So you're pulling those two?
Those two I'm pulling, yes.
Okay. Councilwoman McTupan?
Oh. I forgot D.
I'm sorry.
D to go into executive session, we got to do that.
Right. Now the next, we have, what is the, is the executive session?
I don't have anything to pull, but when Cindy Matouk Brown, I saw the comment about the, the bonds and I, I would have liked to have seen a breakdown too and I couldn't, I know it was 2015 and 16, I couldn't find that to look at it, but I couldn't remember what was in that. It was dated back. It was not what you referred to, it was even prior to that. John Musso.
I'm sorry?
I said John Musso.
Yep. To get a list, right, of the projects.
I'm sorry?
Is that what she wants?
Well, because of the breakdown for that.
But we can, we can discuss that, right? Because I pulled it.
Maybe we have a little discussion about what these are.
Okay. Well, I'd like to discuss it in full because it's been pulled.
Okay. Councilwoman Krokoviac?
Yes, thank you. I don't have anything to pull, but I do have questions and about Agenda Item E, Resolution 16619, it's the resolution awarding a contract to mobility coach for the drivers for the jitney.
Okay.
Whenever it's appropriate to ask.
You can ask a question now.
Okay, great. Thank you, Council President. I wanted to bring this up, it's, it's a rather large contract, it's, it's, it went out for competitive bidding, only one bid came back and it's to provide drivers for our jitney buses. And I just wanted to flag this because I think it's really relevant to our budget discussions. We've been discussing the budget on and off all, all council meeting because it's an example of a service that, where the cost is growing significantly more than the ridership. And as, as maybe a lot of you know, this is the only quote, "free" jitney service of its kind in the, in the county where the riders don't actually pay some portion of the service. I just want to flag this because the cost of the drivers, this mobility contract, since 2016, the cost has risen more than 75% to more than $305,000, up more than $131,000 since 2016. The total cost of the jitney service since 2016 has risen nearly 55%, more than $177,000 to, now we've crossed the half a million mark. That amounts to an annual per rider cost or subsidy of nearly $1,600 for the estimated 315 riders. That's a daily round trip cost of $6.15. And while all of these are going up, the costs are going up very high, the ridership is up only 21% during that time. And I just wanted to flag this for council people because I don't see how we can get around it in the short run. We keep putting this out for bid and we keep only getting one bid back and... We keep putting this out for bid, and we keep only getting one bid back, and the costs go up significantly. But maybe this is something that we should consider, and I think we've talked about it before in our budget discussions, about whether to start charging some portion of that $6.15. So I just wanted to flag that for everybody.
Yes, Counselwoman.
I thought he was talking. I hear and understand your sentiment, Council President, but I do want to flag this as well. It was one of the things I wanted to discuss as a question with respect to a consideration since we are looking at such a hardship for our residents. It's worthy of discussion and certainly something that we need to pay careful attention to. The ridership, when I received this initially, was only 310, and that's where we are. I think we're upward to that a little bit, but it's something to consider. If we're being honest about having another working session, I'd like to have a working session that's going to be a robust discussion of things that we would consider changing.
And to--
If I can finish. And I know that as Council President, you can have your opinion, but this is a governing body, and in its totality, we all have a voice to share and opinions to express and actually, and certainly, a vote to exercise. So I just want to echo Councilman Kocovia's sentiments in this discussion.
My point back to you, Counselors, I know, I'm not saying you don't have a right, and not because I'm Council President, it has nothing to do with it.
It's because you're saying no.
Okay? Has nothing-- Let me finish. Okay, just like he said, let me finish. Okay? What I'm saying is, when I talk to the residents, they think it is a benefit. It's helped the real estate, it's helped sell the program to the township, just because we're the only free one, that means that we don't have to do it. So fine, so what you're saying is, so you want to save a couple of pennies to the taxpayers, but you're going to increase the cost to 300 or 400 people that take the shuttle. That's all I'm saying. Then we can go back, I want to see, then we should cut other programs where people who don't use it, let's cut those programs. If a resident doesn't use the program, just like this is what it's saying, only 300, then let's cut some programs where the other resident, that the residents come in, "I don't use that, let's cut it." In all respect to you, Counselwoman, I'm not saying as Council President, I have my opinion and you don't. We all do. As a collective bargaining, we do. And we want to talk about it, that's fine.
Okay, that's all--
And I'll bring the residents in, and they'll have, they're going to have their comments too.
I just want to echo those same sentiments, that it's worthy of a discussion.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. During our budget hearings, if you recall, we did have this conversation. And what we had talked about is the administrative fee, that if we were to charge, we were looking at an analysis of what it would cost to create some kind of swipe or card or something so that the drivers are not carrying cash, and how do residents pay if they were to pay. So we were looking, that was an additional expense that would be on top of this. And you're right, we are the only, we do not have a train station in our town, and this really helps with our commuter population and our real estate value.
Yes, Counselwoman Castelino?
Okay, so I'm one for, I've been very supportive of the program. And it brings a benefit, especially to our seniors, because the jitney service is used during the daytime for our senior programs. So it is, it is a great benefit. I think, though, we're at the point now where we have to have the discussion. And I know the administration isn't supportive of it. From the beginning, I had, or since I, since I became, since I served on the council, I felt at the very least, we should have identification cards so we could identify West Orange residents. And I think we could do it cheaply through, or more cost-effectively, through the Community Pass Program that we utilize for the Recreation Department, where I would support a yearly fee, a minimal yearly fee to start out, especially because this year, there is an increase. But if we have 300 riders, you know, we could talk about this at a-- I'm supportive of passing this now, but it's a conversation for later, maybe at pending matters, and we talk about further budget items that I think we need to, I think we need to price it out, get a true price on utilizing Community Pass, because even, you know, $62,000 were in need, which we, was not supported at the budget hearing, was a full-time senior citizen bus driver. She's having a hard time getting a part-time, another part-time person in there. So again, that money can maybe be utilized to get some more drivers. Again, I think it's a discussion. I support both my Councilman Kocovia and Matute Brown in having discussion on this. I think it's time, we have to look at it. And I'd like Mr. Sayers to see how we could do it through Community Pass. Maybe it's just an ID card that's generated or receipt. I think a receipt is recreated, but I'd like to see an ID card where they could go down to the township pool. You know, not everybody uses a township pool. And, and, you know, we pour a lot of resources into that. It's a big benefit for the community. But those who use it also pay a minimal fee for it. They don't pay full price of what it would cost to run the pool, but they do pay a partial fee. And maybe we have to entertain this for our commuter jitney riders. I would not be supportive of it for our senior services, though. I'm done.
Go ahead. Yes, sir.
I totally agree with you, Council President. I think it is a valuable service, and I think the people that use it do think it's a valuable service. We don't disagree on that. And I'm not suggesting that we cut the service in any way. I'm just saying that when we're looking at such a large property tax increase this year that the decisions we make are harder. It's not just, there's not a whole lot of little hanging fruit. And maybe this is, this is an area that, that we could start offsetting some of the, some of the costs. And keep the service, and keep the service.
And I agree, I agree with what you're saying, but what you're missing is, so then you're going to, what you're taking a point is, how much are you going to save by taking or charging? Okay? How much are we going to save when we reduce it? Give me a number. And then we say to those residents now that you're charging $100 or $200 a year, you're saving the overall township maybe a dollar? I'm just saying, I don't have the numbers in front of me. But you're charging those residents that then take it $200. That's all I'm saying. Where is the equity? I'm not arguing with my council colleagues, but you're not looking at that. I agree, if it's safe, if we cut that or charge it, and we saved a lot of money, and then I'd say, okay, it's a net-net offset. But when you're going to go to the residents, and I speak to the shuttle residents, and they say they like it, they feel that's why they moved here, okay? I feel for the tax rate that we charge our residents and the high taxes we have, it's something we're giving back. It's something that we're giving back to the residents to offset some of their expense. Now, you could say, is that fair to the ones who don't use it? No. But then again, if you charge a program-- And I'm arguing, I'm not disagreeing with any of my colleagues. I'm only trying to, where the sense is, if you're charging the residents, and if you make them pay, and it saves overall a dollar, I'm saying a dollar, if that's what it does. And I'm not saying a dollar is nothing. Every dollar helps. But then you're going to put additional burden on the people that use the shuttle, so where's the equity? They actually have to wind up paying more to be in the township of West Orange. That's all I'm saying. I'm not disagreeing. I'm just saying that's the way you have to look at it. Because then I can say, well, I don't want to pay for this because I don't use it. And that's, that's all I'm saying. We could cut money all over the place. I'm just saying, everybody wants to sit down, and I did, in all disrespect to my council colleagues, just because I'm the council president doesn't say I'm telling you what you have to listen to. I'm saying, we're all here as a collective unit, and we're all going to make decisions, we're all going to discuss it. And that's all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying, Counsel.
And, you know, I'm not disagreeing with you--
No, I'm saying it works.
--on principle. Mr. Gross has been very helpful in his analyses, talking about how much money we could raise to offset the cost by charging different, different rates. I'd also point out that somebody mentioned, I can't remember who, mentioned the pool, where we do have people pay a portion of the cost. We do similar things with the Recreation Department services. People usually have to pay, you know, registration fees. So I'm just saying, maybe, maybe it might be, might be time. If, if this costs us half a million dollars, that's, that's about 11% of our tax increase right there, so.
A dollar? Okay, I understand what you're saying. No, thank you. Okay, any other questions? Any other? Yes, ma'am.
Well, just on some other resolutions.
Sure.
What do you mean?
We're still discussing what they're going to go on.
Yes. I just had a few questions on the resolution.
Excuse us.
What are we doing with this?
We're done because we're voting on this.
This resolution is still on consent.
Right. Right. Yes, Counsel.
And it's just questions on some of the other, just for my clarification, some of the other resolutions. Resolution 168, which is the reconstruction of Lessing Road, St. Cloud Avenue to Edgewood Avenue. And these funds, I believe, are coming out of the 2018 capital improvement budget, is that correct?
That's correct.
And it's not the total, and really, this is for the benefit of the public, that while it does state $430,753 for this reconstruction, $230,000 of that is grant monies. $200,000 is coming from our capital expense budget. So I just wanted to be clear on that as well. And also, questions on Resolution 17019? And this has to do with the Flashco property, the Matrix contract? Right? Is that 170? Selecto Flash, thank you. Did I just transverse those?
Yes.
So it's for the development on 18 Central Avenue, and it's utilizing a grant award. So my question was not with respect to the grant, it was with respect to some of the things that are proposed in the contract by Matrix New World. So they talk about it, maybe you can answer this at a later time if you don't have the answer. But when they were talking about testing and collecting water to test, to investigate what the non-hazardous particles are, they're going to be collecting 22 55-gallon drums, and then they're going to purge them. I just wondered if they were contaminated, where typically is that purged? And I'm pretty sure you don't have the answer to that, but--
I don't know specifically, but, but, but there are--
Yes, sites, I'm sure.
There are statutes--
That regulate.
And rules that regulate how that has, and everything has to be done within the rules as promulgated by the state of New Jersey.
Okay. And I also just wanted to say, when I read through the Matrix New World contract, that it is very, very specific in what they're testing, what they have found, and how it is contained, and how they have done research with respect to adjacent properties. So I didn't want this to be an alarm, to go off on anyone's signal that there is contamination, there is testing for contamination, and it is confined to that particular development. So that was that question.
Yes, Counselwoman McCarver?
Okay, so to your point, this is a designated brownfield. It has been for a number of years. So the money, we have a $5 million grant, and we're drawing from that. And the remediation that Matrix has been doing over the years, also on Valley Road, is drawing from that fund.
That's wonderful.
So it is a designated brownfield.
What is the name of a designated?
A designated brownfield.
Brownfields.
The Brownfields.
Doesn't sound very, yeah.
No.
No brownfields.
No brownfields.
Okay. And this next one, I won't, because Councilwoman Castellino spoke on it already, but I just want to echo the sentiments and kudos to our West Orange Police Department for proactively seeking out resources and training to develop programs for our police officers to be cognizant of behavioral and mental concerns with our residents when they approach them, to just make sure that we continue to have everyone safe and sound. Resolution 17319 is also a road project reconstruction on St. Cloud Avenue, Old Indian Road to North Edgewood Avenue. So this, these funds, Mr. Gross, are coming from the 2019 capital budget. Is that the capital budget, the temporary one we approved early on?
Yeah.
I just wanted to clarify that for the residents so that there, you know, there is no confusion that we're drawing on funds that we have not yet approved. This is from the budget that was temporarily approved in January. And those are all my questions.
Thank you, Counselwoman.
Thank you.
Can we answer the Councilwoman's questions?
No. No, they answered as they went along.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
I appreciate that.
No problem, I just wanted to make sure. Okay. Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented. Councilwoman Matute Brown, you pulled 163-19, Resolution Providing for the Combination of Certain Issues of General Improvement Bonds of the Township of West Orange into a Single Issue of Bonds Aggregating $7,621,000 in Principal Amount.
So my, I shared an email earlier with Mr. Gross and my council colleagues because I didn't quite understand what this aggregation was. And while the, you did respond, and thank you, I have not had a chance to check my email since the last response. With respect to combining all of these, can you just talk about what does this mean?
These two resolutions are basically mechanical resolutions. The council-approved bond ordinances--
I saw the dates, yes.
--over a period of time. That authorizes us to then spend those funds in accordance with how you've directed or come back to you for permission along the way. Those funds have to be raised. We do not go out for bonds right away, because it's very expensive to do, and you wouldn't do it necessarily every, every time you pass a bond ordinance. So what we do is, on an annual basis, we go for what is called a bond anticipation note, which is short-term financing. Once that short-term financing, you can, you just pay the interest only for the first three years. After that, you have to do pay downs and principal. Or you can, or roll them into some type of permanent financing. In order to do that, the law specifies, the bond law says, in order to sell, you have to, if you're putting together multiple issues, you have to combine them into one. And then, how are you going to sell them, how are you going to pay them back? These resolutions identify the specifics into what you're going to go out, how you're going to go out and sell the bond. It's, that's why it's basically mechanical. It's considered a housekeeping resolutions, because they're not, it's not a, it's not a policy issue. You've already made the policy issues. We're now just doing the financing and moving forward. There are ramifications to everything. In putting together the budget this year, we did not anticipate, we anticipated going out long, and we talked about that earlier in the year, this year with a bond, with a bond sale. So we budgeted accordingly. If for some reason, council decided they didn't want to do a bond sale this year, certainly you could turn these resolutions down, but that would require us then to go back and fund a down, a pay down within this year's budget, which would increase this year's budget several thousand, several hundred thousand dollars. So this is, these resolutions are in anticipation of what we bet, the direction we've been going this year, and we ask you to approve them.
Okay. And I also, obviously, I also ask the questions for the benefits of the public who are both here and who will be watching later, because, you know, when, on first glance, you're looking at a resolution that's determining the form and order and details of $7 million, particularly in present day, with our budget being what it is, I just wanted to have a full and clear understanding that it's not that we're going out for these and for specific line items, i.e. the bump of cars. That's not what this is for. These are things that have already, bonds that have already been approved. And I saw the dates going back a number of years, and that's why they're being combined. So I thank you for that clarification and that learning lesson. That's it for me, Council President.
Sure. Thank you, Counselwoman.
Is there a motion to approve 163-19?
So moved.
Second. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Kocovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCarver?
Yes.
Council President Corina?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown, you pulled 164-19, Resolution Determining the Form and Other, I'm sorry, Form and Other Details of $7,621,000, General Improvement Bonds of the Township of West Orange, Providing for Their Sale.
I think that in our previous conversation, we addressed both of these, since they are in tangent, so I'm fine with putting that for a vote.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve 164-19?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Kocovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinances on second and final reading. 2576-19, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 2, Section 59 of the General Ordinances of West Orange entitled Board of the Oscar Schindler Performing Arts Center. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Sumo.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes. Is there any... Sorry, she, her hand went up really quickly. Is there anyone from the general public wishing to be heard on ordinance 257619? Please raise your hand and come forward if you want to make any comments about this ordinance. Seeing none, I close public comment on this ordinance. I open it to my council colleagues. Councilwoman McCartney?
I know we had a couple of reiterations of this ordinance. I still want to suggest that in the, what would be number four, the appointments of members in terms of the meeting, that there should be a member of the Pleasant Valley Production Board members should also be included in this. It doesn't actually spell that out. I'm sure that they would be there, but I think it should be specified in the ordinance that, not necessarily director, but a representative from the Pleasant Valley Production should be included, especially if you're asking them for financial information, they would have to know to provide that.
If I may, I completely am supportive of that. I just have a question with respect to legal, Mr. Kaiser. If there was a situat... He's like, oh, God, here, you're on the hot seat. If there was a situation where there's a dissolution of the agreement between Pleasant Valley Production, would this have to be amended if we appoint one of their board members to this board?
I have to turn to the ordinance itself, and the paragraph you're speaking of. I got to say, I'm not a fan of amending ordinances on second reading.
No, no.
It was, I know the comment had been made prior, and I did not see it reflected here.
Plus, one of the options you might have...
Council consensus?
Is to go ahead and adopt, and then you can introduce an amendment, so at least it comes.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, then I would be in support of that.
That's the cleaner way to do it.
Okay, let's do it the clean way, then.
My, oh, can I make a recommendation? I mean, I'm supportive of having someone from there on there. Now you have six members, how do you have a tiebreaker? That's what you need to determine. So you could either have two members appointed by the mayor, or I don't know how you want to do that. Two members from their organization.
Maybe two members from their own.
Not recommended.
They're all in favor.
Point me to the change that you want to make.
Page two?
It's hard to read, but it says, yeah, it is on page two, just the first paragraph. It's kind of blurry, but it says, "The Board of the Oscar Schindler Performing Arts Center shall be comprised of the following..."
Right.
"...A, B, C, D, E." And I'm suggesting or recommending that either one or two board members from Pleasant Valley Production be also on this commission or board.
One or two.
Well, two, as Michelle...
Well, there are oversights on them.
It would be even.
Well, it is better to have an odd number, number one.
May not be from their group.
But you're not going to change it now, you know, but if you want to make that change in the next meeting or the meeting after, you can do that.
Okay.
But you have to, you know, stop using or, you got to decide what you can do.
What do you mean or?
Well, you said one or two.
Oh, we're saying that it shouldn't be an even number, it has to be an odd number, so yes.
It would be better than that.
Yeah.
Yes, Councilman Krokoviac has a question.
And Pleasant Valley Production, I mean, having spoken to them after, you know, the last few meetings, they are in favor of this, and are willing, and also made the recommendation to add public work, so we're happy to see that, since they do maintain the property.
Are you, Councilman Krokoviac?
One of my many suggestions on improvements to the ordinance between the first and second reading was to bring in, see if you could get some professional help brought in from outside. It would provide some independence, and would also provide some professional expertise. We have pretty robust theater operations or academia at both Montclair State and Seton Hall University. We've got the South Orange Performing Arts Center there that's a full-time indoor. There are plenty of people that we could get to provide particular expertise for something that could be overlooking OSPEC, the board, and that would bring it back to your odd number.
All right.
Yes, ma'am.
May I? I'm just going to say that I really disagree with that, that Pleasant Valley Production has been in existence for a number of years. They're only just at OSPEC now, but they are a professional organization, and they have been working together for over 20 years. So I don't know that someone from the outside has to come in to oversee that.
If I can suggest, any amendment you're going to make is going to happen, not tonight.
Fair.
So since tonight's hearing is about the ordinance that's, that you're considering, if you're going to act on it tonight, and then going to, then you can have a discussion afterwards, or at some point in time about what changes you want to make, and you can debate that, and maybe during...
So we introduce it in the next one.
Yes, Councilman Krokoviac?
I have, I have asked multiple times for what the expertise of Pleasant Valley Productions is in managing a performing arts center, and I have never been told that they have any expertise in managing a performing arts center. So I think it would be a great idea to actually add somebody to the board that actually does have professional experience and in this area.
Great. Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to adopt the, yes, to adopt the ordinance now, right?
You don't need to make a motion, we're going to do that, but that's what Mr. Gross was saying.
And then we will discuss it afterwards.
Adopt this, and then you can have a discussion.
Okay. Councilman Krokoviac?
Thank you. I just, before we voted, I just wanted to say a few things. I'm totally supportive of OSPEC, of more programming, more oversight, more transparency, and even more revenue sharing. And I think this ordinance is a good start, but I think it needs a lot more work. I flagged a bunch of issues with the ordinance on first reading, and I responded to Councilwoman Matute Brown's request to provide my thoughts in writing, and a few of those suggestions were taken, and they're, to be more reflective of what was, said was the intent according to the comments of the first reading, but most of my suggestions weren't. I'm not going to beat a dead horse, particularly when there seems to be some openness to making additional changes. But I just want to flag a few of the things that I think are the most significant issues that should be addressed. And this is something I raised the first time, which is that my understanding of the state ordinance law is that there can't be significant changes between the first and second readings. And just as a few examples, the first version gave the board the power to review and approve programming, to audit the financial records of the licensee, and it also granted council approval of all board members. In the second version that we have, all of those are changed, in addition to numerous other changes. Another point is that the license agreement that was previously approved earlier this year specifically says that all programming is subject to prior approval of the board. The ordinance, as it's written now, does not do that, and probably requires us going back and looking at the license agreement again. There's no mention in this OSPEC board ordinance of any relationship between the board and the licensee, which seems a little unusual. And I'll just point out again that we have a pending investigation of the previous operations of OSPEC, and we're not sure what those problems specifically are, but I'm glad that there's some openness to perhaps modifying this and improving it, because once we find out what those problems are, we want to make sure that they aren't repeated.
Thank you, Councilman. There is a motion to vote on the ordinance right now. Madam Clerk? Thank you, Councilman Krokoviac.
Is there a motion to approve 2576-19 on second and final reading?
Sumo.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
I'm, I'm sorry, can you just give me a pass and let me come back around at the end of the voting?
Sure.
I can explain why I'm not sure on what I should do, but...
Okay. I'll follow your request, Councilman.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Madam Clerk, continue with the roll call.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
I'm going to abstain.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay. And we'll amend this, we're going to, the discussion is this ordinance will be amended at the next council meeting?
You have to let the legal department know what the amendments are, if that's what you want.
Okay, so we need all me and discuss. Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, continue with the agenda.
Ordinances on first reading, 2577-19, an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Section 47.6 of the Revised General Ordinances of West Orange, Studies and Recommendations. This ordinance expands the scope of the West Orange Environmental Commission to add, to add the West Orange Zoning Board of Adjustments to the list of entities to which the commission can make recommendations. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
Sumo.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
I would like, can I explain?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So when this, this ordinance was established for the Environmental Commission, we changed from the Energy Commission to the Environmental Commission back in 2013, because though we were saving or conserving energy at that time and concentrating on that, we were still operating as an environmental commission, and unless you have an environmental commission in place, you could not receive, be awarded any grants, or even apply for grants. So we created the ordinance to change the name from the Energy Commission to the Environmental Commission, and I guess the way we worded it, thinking that anything coming out of the planning board, the Environmental Commission gets a copy of applications, but this is specifically saying that the Environmental Commission can review planning board applications and also zoning board applications. So that's really what we're asking for.
If I may add, if I may add, I just submitted to legal to add the Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board the same type of ordinance.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I've done, based on Councilwoman McCartney's suggestion, too.
Very good.
Even though we have complete street.
You have to implement it.
Yes, Councilwoman, I'm sorry.
So I just want clarification, one of my question was, so you had, so that hasn't been done up until this point, then? This is the...
We have been reviewing planning board applications.
But never the zoning board applications.
But not zoning, because it was not by ordinance.
Because I've sat a few zoning board meetings, and you've had representatives go there to approach them, but, okay, but you had to gather, the information never came to you.
Right.
Okay.
Any other comments? Madam Clerk?
2579-19, an ordinance authorizing the offer by private sale of the property at Block 175.08, Lot 11, on the township of West Orange tax map, to the adjacent property owners pursuant to local lands and building law. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
Sumo.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Okay. 2580-19, ordinance of the township of West Orange adopting a redevelopment plan relating to the West Orange Library redevelopment area. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
Sumo.
Second.
Council, oh, I'm sorry, well, I did do a motion, I have to take a vote.
Council President, I just, I had something to say about this, I don't know whether I should say it now, or after we do the motion to introduce.
We can vote to introduce it, and then you can make your comments.
Great, great, thank you, thank you.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes. Councilman Krokoviac?
Thank you. I just wanted to pass out this, this is, this is Resolution 19, sorry, this is Resolution 99-19 that we approved earlier this year, and again, there's an exhibit, if I could just get you to distribute those, and just, I circled some information at the bottom of the first page. I think there's the next one, I think I only have one next one. Anyway, this is, the exhibit that I'm showing you is Exhibit B of Resolution, the addendum to Resolution 99-19, and again, it's a contract for, with Hired Rule and Associates that was entered into with, by the chairman of the planning board, dated March 12, 2019, at the bottom of the first page. It talks about Hired Rule, this is a letter that was sent to Chairman Weston. Our fee for preparation of the redevelopment plan, this is for the library, which we just voted to approve on first reading, or for a toll of $18,000, including attendance at one planning board meeting and one council meeting. All of the meetings will be billed separately per meeting at our hourly rates. We've had some major disagreements about this issue, but I thought I would flag it because, again, this looks like a valid contract to pay Hired Rule $18,000, and to have them come and present at a council meeting on this plan. So this being first reading, I just wanted to make sure that we were actually going to abide by this contract. I didn't want to get to the meeting next week, next council meeting, and not have someone here to explain the plan.
Okay. Councilwoman, uh, who's, who's, Councilwoman Matute Brown?
To that point, I attended the special planning board meeting with respect to adopting the amended recommendations last week. It was literally a 15-minute meeting, and I took advantage to ask the attorney, and please pardon me if I mispronounce his name, is it Dwyer, the planning board?
Dwyer is the attorney.
Dwyer?
Dwyer.
Dwyer. So I approached him, because I was a little confused, and this stemmed from the last council meeting with respect to having the planner come and discuss this. Now, I've attended planning board meetings, I've attended zoning board meetings for informational purposes, and I have heard it said that councils should not comment in public in those forums, and I understand that Councilman Krokoviac at one time approached the dais in May at some point, and was, it was determined that he should not comment. So when I approached Attorney Dwyer on that, to ask, where do we, as elected officials, as the ones that are ultimately going to have to make the determination whether or not to adopt, has been recommended, or send it back for further review, where do we have that opportunity to ask questions? And he did say that it was not advisable for council members to ask questions at those, at those forums, that we had the right to have them come here to have questions. So I don't know if it's policy, because he said there was nothing written, it's just something that they have always adhered to. So for the benefit of us being informed, and not for lack of participation, because I've attended, and I know a lot of my council colleagues, I see them also at these meetings, but there is not an opportunity for us to question the professionals who have written this plan there, and since it's included here, I certainly want to be able to exercise that right, now that I have confirmation that we cannot question at any other meeting. So I say that to say that I do support Councilman Krokoviac's flagging this, just as I did at the last meeting, because I think it's, it's something that is incumbent upon us, if we want questions answered, that we have that opportunity, because we can't have that according to Attorney Dwyer at any other forum.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
So that's not to say you can't submit questions, and they can get answers, and I go back to our past, our last meeting, and, Joe, you're right, it says that there will be one planning board meeting, one council meeting. This is the existing zoning and the proposed zoning for the site next door. It is not the plan, it's a zoning plan. I would suggest, and Councilwoman Castellino brought it up at our last meeting, that when we actually get a redevelopment plan and we see it, then that's when your, when your planner can come back to the council meeting. Because this clearly spells out what can and cannot... Because this clearly spells out what can and cannot be approved there. It's just, it's a zoning map.
Councilwoman Matute Brown.
So when I did reference that same statement to Mr. Dwyer, because I voted the last time to approve it, because that's what was reiterated here on this day, is that we could question the planner when there was an actual plan, I verbatim specifically said that to him, and he said, "There's no need to do it at that point, because the council has already approved the plan, so there's nothing else for you to approve." That was his instructions to me, and further, it's like beating a dead horse at that point, why bother? So I'd have to disagree only because this is what Mr. Dwyer said, so perhaps maybe as a council, we can have a conversation with the zoning board attorney to just have clarification as to what our standing is with respect to our responsibility in being completely informed prior to our vote. Thank you.
I mean, look, the position that we've always taken is that you, no problem with your going to planning and zoning board meetings to educate yourself, to listen, you really shouldn't be part of making a record at those meetings, because you're going to decide on this later. And it's just, I don't think, it doesn't differ from town to town, that's just the way it is, I think, in almost every town. I mean, I'm not aware of a situation where governing body members, no matter what the former government, you know, are encouraged or permitted to ask questions at planning and zoning board meetings, but certainly allowed to attend. And I don't, if you have questions about these things from Ms. Rule or whoever the planner is, and remember, we also have a planner that works for the town, Mr. Greigle, you should be able to get answers to those questions, it's just a matter of what the procedure is to do it. And I, you know, we'll have, we can talk about how to do that, and I have no problem with that. I, you know, I was here when Mr. Trank talked about, you know, approving $7,000 for Ms. Rule to come here to answer questions, and I'm sure she wouldn't charge that much, frankly, but, you know, I don't, I think, on the other hand, there may not be a real need for her to be present here to answer those questions, if, it depends on what the questions are. And at the last meeting, what I was trying to get a grip on was what questions there were. If you can be specific about the questions, maybe they can get answered without having somebody come in here from wherever and, you know, spend a lot of time, not to mention some money, to get answers.
If I can just respond to that, completely understand, and it's generally my practice before I come to any meeting to have those questions answered in advance, so that I have an understanding, but it's also my practice that when I am in this forum, because not everyone is privy to attending, that for the sake of transparency, we have those conversations out in public. More specifically, and to Councilman Krokoviac's point, it's already included, so there's nothing additional. I just don't understand what the harm is in having those questions answered in a public forum where both the guests that are here, or residents that are here, and those who are not, can watch it later and hear those answers for transparency's sake. I do have questions that I would put in an email, but I would also like to ask them here, and if it's included that we are paying for it anyway, I don't see what the objection is.
Mr. Kayser, any other response, or? Councilman Krokoviac?
With all due respect, Mr. Kayser, not only does the planner answer questions from the Planning Board, she also presents her plan, and there's no way that we can get a presentation of her plan unless she is here, and we can't ask her questions that might arise from the presentation of her plan unless she's here. And that's why we have the contract, and the contract is very clear, and it says, "One appearance before the council," and it has to be at that time. I'm glad you brought up Mr. Trank telling the council wrongly that it might cost up to $7,000. Wait, please let me finish, please let me finish. That it might cost us up to $7,000 to have her here, when the contract, as we learned, specified that she was already required to be here. I agree with Councilwoman Matute Brown, what's the damage? She's already agreed to do it, we've already paid her the money, or at least agreed to pay her the money. Something that nobody else has mentioned, having her here to present on her plan provides transparency for anyone who wants to watch this video, if we ever get the TV broadcast of these videos fixed, they can watch that, or they can watch it on the internet, because this is what we're talking about, a central asset of many people in this town, which is the library, and what we're going to do for it. I also want to, with all due respect to Councilwoman McCartney, the local, the state local redevelopment and local housing law is very specific about what a redevelopment plan is, and you keep using the word redevelopment plan in a way that is not in the law, is not in the statute. You talk about a proposal, you don't use the word proposal, you talk about a proposal that would be made by a potential redeveloper, based upon the redevelopment plan that we have in front of us, that we just approved on first reading, and that we're trying to get the planner here to talk about. We, as the governing body, are the only people who can actually put this into law, and we are also authorized to make any change within the law, within the boundaries of the law, of this plan. If we don't like this plan, if we think the library should, property should go in a different direction, we can do that. So, again, I reiterate that we need to follow through on what appears to me to be a valid contract, and get her here at the next reading, the second reading of this, so that we can get a presentation from her, and that we can ask her questions, and so that the townspeople who are interested in this subject can see it, when they can't see it at the Planning Board. Thank you, Council President.
Yes, ma'am.
And this is conversation that Cindy and I have had also, this is a zoning plan, it says, it does say redevelopment plan, but there is no redeveloper, and there is no application. I'm trying to use the right term. This, it so clearly specifies the existing conditions, it was already designated, and there ain't any redevelopment. It talks about the existing zoning, what's there, the permitted uses, and now spells out what can be proposed there. We do not have a plan, this is, it's the same word, but it's a zoning plan, proposed zoning. We do not have an application. And this clearly spells out, if you don't like this particular plan, what this plan is proposing, we should, can talk about the plan itself, what this plan is proposing, is leaving 7,500 square foot, square footage for library, community space at the library, and having an additional 60 or 70 senior housing units on top of the library.
Affordable housing units.
Pardon?
Affordable housing units.
Affordable housing, well, senior housing, right. It talks about all of the design standards, architectural designs, it talks about landscaping, lighting, stormwater management, and goes on to the circulation plan that's here, we were just talking about complete streets, streetscape plan, steep slopes, again, this doesn't have a plan, because there are steep slopes that are, have to be involved, talks about electric vehicle charging station, renew, and we have a sustainability checklist in the Planning Department, and many of the features that are on our sustainability checklist in our master plan are addressed in this plan.
Yes, Councilman.
In the zoning plan. We don't have an application yet, and if that's when you want the planner to talk about an application, that would make sense. This is existing zoning and what's proposed at that site.
Thank you, Councilman.
Clearly spelled out, if you don't like the plan, then you vote no.
Councilman?
Again, with all due respect, Councilwoman McCartney, first of all, you have had the advantage that none of us have had, of sitting on the Planning Board and hearing everything about this, okay? But second of all, you're wrong. The state redevelopment law says that the governing body can change anything in the plan.
Okay, now's the time to do it.
You just said, excuse me, you just said, "If you don't like the plan, you can vote against it." No, that's not all the options. There's an option that we can change the plan.
And that's the question that's coming up, what would you change? What are your questions, and what would you change? It's clearly spelled out what's being proposed, so if you have something that you disagree with, or something you would like to amend, now would be the time to do it.
No, now would not be the time to do it, because the planner who wrote the plan is not here, so we can't ask her. Who do we ask these questions to? Who do we, who do we ask for professional expertise?
Well, that's what we're asking you.
No, 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 who do we ask for professional expertise about this plan, if we don't understand something, or if we want to do something? Who do we ask at the meeting?
I don't know.
Do we ask you?
You can certainly...
Do we ask Mr. Kayser?
You can certainly...
Who else, who do we ask?
We keep asking you what your questions are, and you're not telling us any questions, or what you would like to see changed or revised in this plan.
No, because I keep saying it. You have had the advantage of, by sitting on this Planning Board, you've had the advantage of Ms. Rule's presentation, and her answering of all of it. Please stop interrupting me, please. You have had that advantage. The rest of us have not had that. So how are we going to do that? The best way, and the way that is represented in this letter, is to have the author of the plan, the redevelopment plan, come to a council meeting, present and answer questions. I don't understand how I can put it any simpler than that.
Excuse me, are you done?
Yes.
Okay, so here's what I'm going to do this week, because I don't want to get accused of being corrupt, once again, because I understand a plan that I didn't need interpretation on, and that's no offense to my colleagues, because, well, because I'm aggravated, I was called corrupt, not from you, but from Councilman Krokoviac, over the internet. Excuse me, it's my turn now. I did not support this last week, because, number one, I understood it, number two, I didn't want to have to pay, because I was a little aggravated, I have to be honest with Mr. Trank for making that statement, and, you know, he misspoke, but it clearly says we get one freebie, that the, that the planner could come in, one shot, free of charge, it's included in the contract, and I have no issue with that, but I wanted it to come in when a plan was going, or proposal, to be presented to us, so I had no issue with that. In regards to this, it, same thing applies, if the planner comes in next time to explain what's presented before us, which I'm okay with, I don't have questions on it, but if my colleagues need that to come in, I, and I don't mean it that way, I'm just still aggravated about your accusations last week. I will be supportive of that, but be mindful, we will get charged if we have to bring her back again. So if that's what you want to do, I have no problem sitting, listening to the plan, I myself have called the planners in the past, and we have had the planners in here in previous time, because it is a lot of information, and there are questions, so I would like to make a recommendation, I don't have an issue, but be mindful, if you want her to come back after that time for this, for this plan, you know, we're going to have to. But the other reason why I said no, and I'm going to be totally transparent, is because when we do bring a professional in as a planner, then a circus sometimes begins, and that's what I'm not going to be supportive of. So we're going to bring the planner in, and we're going to have questions asked to the planner, and, you know, we're going to be, we're going to treat the planner with the professionalism that the planner deserves. When the planner is here, I will be supportive. I'm not going to sit through a congressional hearing, I could tell you that.
I would...
So again, that's how I feel about the situation, I'm being transparent about it, which I always am transparent about it, and so if you want to bring the planner in, my vote is fine, but I would like the planner be treated with the utmost professionalism when the planner is in the room. Thank you.
No, no, no apologies required, Councilman.
I apologize to the public if I sound curt this evening, but...
I like to, I like to say, and supportive in saying yes, if we have to bring the planner in, I think we all need to put our questions together and submit them first, that, I'm not saying what I'm saying, but we're not going to have...
What don't you understand in the plan? I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, 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 that's okay.
What don't you understand in the plan?
No, no, I'm not saying I have questions, I said if anybody has questions, not to have, like Councilwoman Castellino was saying, another congressional hearing.
I want to go back to the comment that was made, we keep hearing, so this is a letter, we have a copy of a letter, but on the resolution, if you recall, it said the planner was $10,000, not to exceed $10,000. We keep talking about Richard saying a wrongful amount. What Richard was saying is that $7,000 was most likely what it would cost, but it would not exceed $10,000. So I don't...
Council President?
Yes, sir.
If I may, I mean, I was here when Mr. Trank was speaking about that number, and frankly, I didn't take it seriously. I mean, I don't know where that number came from.
It said not to exceed $10,000.
Okay, I have, at that time, I had not read the contract, but in any event, I didn't, I didn't take him literally. Some people apparently did, so, but in any event, I don't have any problem with, and I spoke with Susan Rule, in fact, I spoke to her today, and she doesn't have any problem coming in here, and it's not going to cost $7,000. You know, if she exceeds the number of whatever's in the contract, yeah, it's going to cost some money, it's not going to cost $7,000. It seems to me, and I've had this criticism of the council before, and it's up to you guys, not me, but when you have professionals in here, whether they're planners, or lawyers, or whoever it is, take them first and let them go. You know, take them out of order if you have to, they shouldn't have to sit around here, because they have lives too, and, and we don't need to pay them any more money than their hourly rate, so I would suggest that you do that. To me, the most valuable thing that she could talk about right now is the process and how it works, because we keep getting speeches about, you know, what this means and what it doesn't mean. She's a professional planner, she's been doing this for a lot of years, she's one of the best in the state of New Jersey, and I'd be happy to have her explain all of these processes, and maybe we could be done with this issue once and for all, because these come up again and again. But that's up to you guys, you know, the, at the last meeting, the point I tried to make is, if you have questions, if you want to bring her in, vote on it. We don't make a decision based on what one council person or two council people, one or two want, it's a majority. So you take a vote. If you want to, if there's a motion to bring in somebody, make the motion, take a vote on it, either it happens or it doesn't, and the administration will live with it.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Thank you. First of all, I didn't call any of my colleagues corrupt. If you want me to, I'll be glad to read my Facebook post in which I described the process as being corrupt. If you want me to read it, I'll be happy to, but I think we're all past that. Second of all, you talk about bringing in the planner when we have a proposal? That is not allowed by the law, all right? We can't legally do that. Once we approve this plan, the planner goes away. She will not be appearing on whoever proposes the plan, because the applicant will have their own planner. All right? This is our one chance to have the planner who wrote the plan to come speak with us.
Councilman McCarty?
I'm still not finished, I'm still not finished. I just want to keep addressing Mr. Kayser's comments, that you heard that Mr. Trank told us it was going to cost up to $7,000 to bring her in, and you didn't take it literally, but you didn't say anything, because that was the floor motion, and that was the floor motion that Mr. Trank suggested, and that's the floor motion that was made. So I can't believe to say that you, that you heard it, and you didn't literally take it seriously, because the rest of us did, and it was intended to be taken seriously, when the contract specified she was going to be here anyway, without any cost.
Can, Councilman McCarty, in due respect, sir, can we get a point of order here, and let's move forward? I'd like, let's just, you've made your comment, very respectful, and in due respect to you, Councilman, okay, but let's have point of order here, let's move ahead with this, it's only first reading, and then we have, we can work on it. So, Madam Clerk, I'd like to move forward with a motion for this ordinance to move it forward and get...
We've already done that, we've already done that.
We voted on it.
Yes, we're voting on it.
No, we did.
We've already voted on it.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
To introduce on first reading.
So, we're, I'm sorry.
So now, Council President, if anyone has any questions, because we have been talking, been talking about this for two months now, now would be the time to present your questions to the planner, if you want that expertise, before this comes up on second reading.
Councilman Matute Brown?
Can I make a motion that we request the planner come for second reading?
I second that.
Wait, Mr. Kayser?
To Councilwoman McCartney's point, if you have questions, you know, let us, let her know ahead of time, so she can be prepared.
I absolutely will, but again, my... I absolutely, I absolutely will, but again, my purpose in having her here is for the general public as well, but I have my questions already written. I will present.
Public meeting goes at the planning.
Yeah. There is.
So there's a motion on the floor. I made a motion to have the planner come in.
Councilwoman McCovey?
I was going to say, is what the motion is, is whether we're going to follow the contract or not, because I think it's pretty clear that we should follow the contract and not take a vote. We're voting on whether we should enforce the contract, follow the contract, abide by the contract. The contract is very clear, says it's going to come in at one council meeting. I don't think we should take a vote on whether we're going to follow the law or not.
So, so perhaps it was my nuance as a, as a new council member, was it not a motion? Can I ask? What do I do? How do we get her here next, next meeting? That's the ultimate goal here. How do I get her here? How do we get her here? I'm sorry.
Make the motion and vote.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, I second it. Yes.
Right. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCovey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Metu Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
No.
Council President Garino?
Yes. Okay. Pending matters, new matters, council discussion? Yes, Mr. Sayers?
Yeah, but we have A, B, C in executive session.
That way you can let the public.
What are we on?
Who's asking the planner?
We're on pending matters, new matters, or are we going to go to, we have an executive session, we have an executive session, so I think we should go into executive session.
No, I think we should finish the.
We have the A, B, C hearing.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's no action after.
Okay.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, anybody with matters pending?
Okay.
Any matters?
Yeah, yeah, I do. So, two things. First, in regards to the conversation we just had, in the future, if we feel that a presentation should be made to Councilman's point, so to bring somebody on second reading, we should do that on first reading. So if this happens in the future, we should have the, a presentation on first reading. I would prefer to see it then, this way we have, could ask our questions on first reading. Okay. So, note to administration, if my colleagues agree to that. Secondly, in regards to the budget, so I think we need to either have further discussion after executive session or have pencil in another date, do we want to meet? Are we fine with the budget as is? I, I think, not with the administration as we discuss, or maybe we need one person to, Madam Clerk to babysit us, but.
Yes, sir.
But is there support to have another meeting, a workshop meeting, to have discussion to see if we want to go anywhere further or, or just to be completed to move forward? Because I believe next meeting, we, do we vote next meeting? In July? So we need to, we need to wrap this up.
The public hearing is at the July 16th meeting.
Which we could have discussion, but if we want to do any in-depth conversations.
It's anticipated that you'll be, you, you need to be in a position to adopt at that meeting as well.
Yeah, so we should have all our ducks in a row and make sure we're, if we're going to have any other reductions, we need to do our due diligence and. My colleagues, I'll defer.
I, I just wanted to say, what happens, and this is just for point of clarification, what happens if the state budget does not pass because there is a shutdown on July 1st? Well, I work for this, I work for the state, we got a notice today, so I'm asking, when, if, if.
We're still required, we're still required.
We're still required to adopt a budget if the state has not adopted their budget?
Yep.
Yep. We're way behind.
Yep.
We're what?
We're behind.
I understand what Councilman's, I know where you're coming from.
The only impact that would, that the state budget would have on ours is if they reduce state aid to the municipality, and if they did do that, there's mechanism within the statutes that allows the municipality to come back and, now, what won't happen, now what won't happen is they won't certify the tax rate. So they'll expect us, and at some point in time, they're going to start levying fines for, for being late, you know, they'll notify us of that. And regardless of whether they adopt or not, we're going to be required to adopt.
And, and also just another point of clarification, talking about the budget here, and it's not to beat a dead horse either, it's just to get clarification, and perhaps on my reading of the statute, that there should be discussion of the municipal budgets in November, not obviously to be adopted until now, but that's how I read the statute, perhaps we can, that's a discussion for.
I'm not understanding, I apologize.
They do start the process with, with their.
And you start the process in November, with your departments?
Oh, yeah, we, sure.
So I'm going to reread the statute, because I, I, I'm pretty sure I read it, and I could be wrong in my reading and interpretation of it, that it should be something that the council is introduced to.
Not in this form of government.
Okay. I'll, I'll read the statute again, but thank you. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome, Councilwoman. Yes, Councilman?
I just want to get clarification. You're saying that under the state law, we have to approve a budget at the July 16th council meeting? There's no leeway? We can't put it off for a week or two or three?
The day that you introduced, we got a notification from the state notifying us that, their notice, taking notice that the budget hadn't been introduced, and that if we did not introduce, if you did not introduce the budget by 6:30, by July, June 30th, we would start accruing a $50 a day fine. Same thing, it's sometime over the next couple of weeks, we're likely going to notice from the state saying the same thing about adoption.
Okay, so when exactly do the, the fines start? And did you say $50 a day?
Yeah.
Okay, and when do the fines start?
When the date they tell us.
Okay.
They'll give us a deadline.
Okay, so, but we're already talking about July 16th as being the deadline for us to approve the budget.
Well, but, yeah, because of the reason.
Right.
Within, within your normal schedule, you have July 16th, and your next meeting is in August, so you have a whole month after that. So, you know, obviously, if you don't, you don't come to terms on July 16th, either, depending on what the status is with the state, you may have to schedule a special meeting, you know, we'll deal with that, but that, that's the timeframe you're in now.
Okay, I understand we're in the timeframe, but I thought I heard that July 16th was the drop dead date, that we had to approve it by July 16th, but I'm not hearing.
No, I said, I said, we had you, we were anticipating that you'd be in a position to adopt on July 16th. We haven't gotten a notice from them about, from the state regarding a drop dead date for adoption yet, but it's coming.
It's going to be, it's going to be the 16th, trust me, especially after that letter we got last week.
Could you send us that letter, please, Mr. Sayers? Or Mr. Gross?
Mr. Gross has it.
Did you send it out? Oh, no, I haven't. I mean, I didn't know what they sent to the council.
Yeah, that would, that would be something council would like to see, I would think, right? You want to see that letter?
Well, again, it came, it came, it came the same day you adopted, so it was, if you introduced, it was less eminent, you know, it was, it was a crisis at that point in time because you were adopting, you were introducing.
Anything, anything else?
So you'll send us, you'll send us a letter? Okay.
Anything else?
So, so if I understand correctly, July 16th may be the drop dead date, but it may not be the drop dead date.
We, we believe it's going to be the drop dead date, and we, we believe that we should approve the budget by the 16th, because if not, then we're going back another month because the next meeting is not until mid, mid-August, which is going to push back another month.
Right.
But it's not a position we want to be in at this point.
Right, but if the state says your drop dead date is your August.
Can I ask a question? Why wouldn't you want to approve it on the 16th? I'm, I'm not understanding why, why you keep asking this question. Why don't you want?
Because we may not be ready to.
Why are you not ready?
Yeah, that's why we're going to have a meeting, that's why.
Right. That's how this all started, this Councilwoman Castellino.
Well, because, because the point being is, I want to, I, I think we should meet one more time to have this discussion, because I'm hearing and reading things out there that, you know, we, we need to, if we're going to cut something, we need to have that conversation. If we're fine where we're at, then we're, then we need to stick to that as well. So if you want to meet and we have that conversation, the week, is everybody around the week of the 8th?
I'm sorry?
Is everybody around the week of July 8th?
No.
Yes.
I mean, next week, before July 4th? Anybody around Monday night? And we can meet in the small conference room we've been.
I don't think we can do that. That would be a public meeting, right?
Well, we have to.
Whatever you do is a possibility.
Oh, yeah, that's true. Work, so is this available here?
You can have a meeting.
I don't know, I have to find out.
Okay, no, I was just thinking about, Matt's not going to fit into that room, that's.
No, it's a workshop, it's not going to be on television.
It's a workshop, it's not a televised council meeting, it's a workshop.
It's a legally, it's a legal council meeting. No, we don't have to, but why wouldn't we? Why wouldn't we?
Because why do we need to? Why can't we just have an in-depth conversation and then we could have the show on the 16th?
It's one more budget line item, another $400, $500 for Matt to cover.
All right, no, it's just transparency on an eight and a half percent pending tax increase. I think there's plenty of people that would be interested.
Come on, Joe. I, I mean, really, we're, we never even did this before, so let's try to have a reasonable workshop and not turn it into a circus. So the week of July 8th, Council, Council President, you're not available?
I'm sorry, Sunday, June 30th?
No, the week of July 8th, you're, you're out, you're, it's a vacation.
I'm not sure, the week of July.
That's a Monday, Monday, July 8th.
July 8th is a Monday.
No, the week of, I mean, any dates that week.
Actually, the 8th could work for me.
I'm sorry?
I'm good on the 8th, too.
The 8th or 9th?
I can't, what?
The 8th or 9th, July 8th or 9th.
Joe, how's your calendar?
That's a Monday or Tuesday.
I can't do the 9th.
You can't do the 9th?
My calendar keeper is waving her hand back and forth, saying I.
How about the 10th?
10th is pedestrian safety.
The 9th we can't do. Madam Clerk is not available. How about the 10th?
Do the 8th.
Pedestrian safety.
Oh, it's pedestrian safety.
Pedestrian safety. You can do the 8th, I'm just moving something.
What about next week, July 1st?
What time?
Or this Monday? Or does, we have enough notice? You have enough notice.
Yeah, that's enough notice. We just have to figure out what room.
I'm not here.
You're not?
So what time?
Councilwoman McCartney's not here. How about the 2nd?
Are you out all week?
I'm not. That's your one week, yeah.
Wait, what time are we talking about?
I'll be here, I have to do jury duty.
7:30?
7 or 7:30.
How about the 11th then? I know that's.
I can do the 8th or the 10th.
Can't do the 10th.
I could do the 8th, I just moved something.
But, Councilwoman McCovey, you're not free on the 8th.
I'm not free on the 8th, correct?
And what about the 11th?
I'm not here on the 11th.
I'm available on the 11th, 11th is good.
Councilwoman McCartney is not here.
8, 9, or 10?
July 15th?
You're, that's pushing it.
I know it's pushing it, but, I mean, we went through all the other dates.
Do a weekend.
Well, the 15th, because then the council meeting's on the 16th.
Yeah, I know.